That its reliability is declining as it grows older and substantial investments are necessary. We cannot make those investments without asking the people of Los Angeles to come together with us and to help those investments be made. And that requires unfortunately rates to go up.
Obviously, you've only been involved even in oversight for a couple of years. Why hasn't the department kept the infrastructure current over the years instead of waiting for things to become as you described them, critical?
You know, I don't want to be judgmental of what previous administrations have seen fit to do. And so I'm not going to discuss that in any great detail. I think what is indisputable is that it has been neglected and that we must now have the courage to do something about it. I think it's tempting because the infrastructure is there and it's working to think that it's going to continue to serve, you know, in a dependable way. But we've had a number of studies now, all of which point to an undeniable conclusion that it is deteriorating and it must be addressed now. It's becoming a matter of urgency. And I think Angelenos really didn't need to have studies to tell them that. Anybody who was in the city in the summer of '06 and the summer of '07, anybody who's had outages as we have storms and wind events and other kinds of occurrences that really shouldn't cause widespread outages would attest to the fact that the infrastructure needs urgent attention.
As you know, some of the council members, specifically Councilmember Parks, wanted more information before they came back with a vote in the coming week. What did some of those studies actually show? Can you give us some details of the results of those studies?
Yes, indeed, I can. I'll go back to the first study that I'll talk about, which is a survey that is conducted once every five years of all of the proprietary departments. It's called the Industrial Economic and Administrative Survey. It is initiated by the Controller. It's a requirement under the charter. The last IEA, as it's known, was commenced in 2001, completed in '02. It was sent to the City Council in 2003 by the Controller and was adopted by the City Council in '04. And going back then, that study stated that the infrastructure, as I said, in some places, was reaching the end of its life and that, I think I can quote, "It was likely that rates would have to go up in order to make the necessary investments." Then, the following year, in 2005, the department itself commissioned an examination of its entire infrastructure. That report, known as the EPRI report, really came out with some very serious warnings about the condition of the apparatus of the general infrastructure. As a result of that, the commission, and I was president of the commission at the time, this is in '07, sat and really subjected the budget to a very comprehensive review. It took five days, five eight-hour days, for us to go through the budget line by line in order to make sure that there wasn't waste and to the extent that we found inefficiencies to try to address them. But at the end of that process, in May of '07, we adopted a budget which would lead necessarily to a request for rate increases. And we did that in recognition of the fact that we had to be bold, that we had to have an honest conversation with the people of Los Angeles about the condition of the infrastructure and that we had to move forward decisively. And by the way, this was also borne out in yet another study that was done in '06 called the Barrington Wellesley Report. As a result of all of this, in October, we submitted a request to the City Council for the rate increases that I've just outlined. The City Council didn't take just the word of the Department of Water and Power, but commissioned its own review, its own study. Yet another third-party independent review of the budget and of the rate increases being requested.
Well, I might point out also, you referred to the EPRI report. That would be the Electrical Power Research Institute up in Palo Alto. They are definitely an outside entity that oversees and studies the entire electrical industry and the infrastructure across the country.
Yes, very reputable, very independent, and very, very good at what they do. And this report that the City Council commissioned is known as the Huron Report. And the Huron Report also stated that the rate increases were necessary and that investments had to be made in order to redress a condition that simply couldn't be allowed to continue. Now, even with the Huron Report, the City Council still had a number of questions. They had 11 questions, so they remanded the whole package back to the Water and Power Commission. Those 11 questions were answered. Some refinements were made as a result in the rate increase proposals. For instance, we increased the low-income discount from an average of 15% to an average of 20% and made certain other realignments in the low-income discount program. The result of it will be that for low-income and lifeline customers, that their costs will actually decrease as a result of the rate actions that we're proposing.
By the way, how much revenue would the increases that you're talking about generate? And would that increase alone be enough to properly rebuild the infrastructure on both the water and the power side?
Well, on the power side, the three increases amount to around $160 million. On the water side, they amount to, I think, just over $50 million. And of course, these sums will not be sufficient in order to defray the very substantial costs of having to overhaul the infrastructure on both sides.
Is that where the bond issue that you spoke about in council would come in? How would that be paid for?
That's exactly right. Well, first of all, we have to remember that these are permanent rate increases. So over the next three years, this is what will happen, but those rate increases will continue to generate revenue. But just on the power side, for instance, we'll need about a billion dollars over the next five years to do all of the work that's necessary to be done. So where does that billion dollars come from? Because it certainly isn't going to come from the rate increases alone. And the answer to that is that we go to Wall Street. We're able to issue bonds because we're a municipal agency with very good ratings as far as our fiscal health is concerned. We're able to finance the vast amounts at very low interest rates over a very long period of time.
Well, you mentioned the period of time of five years a moment ago. I got the impression Mr. Parks was not convinced that five years was sufficient time. How long will it take to do all the rebuilding?
Well, the current power reliability program that we've submitted is a five-year program. I think what Councilmember Parks was asking about, if I read it correctly, was whether we could lessen the rate increase by changing that program to a 10-year program. And that is not something that I would find, with all due respect, advisable. As I say, we have a situation right now where we have infrastructure that is worsening and, you know, we have a five-year program. There are metrics, plans. We've got our financing program identified. We know where we're going. And to take that now and change it into a 10-year program would really throw everything off balance. And this has to be tuned and planned in a very fine and very detailed way. And the power reliability program does that.
Obviously, as you know, many times during the council discussion, the issues of transparency and credibility came up several times. Members of the council suggesting that you might not yet have fully contained your problems of labor costs, waste, fraud, abuse, gaming the system by some employees at DWP. Can you bring us up to date on your efforts in those areas?
Well, let me say a number of things. I mean, I understand the concerns that people may have lingering still from the Fleischman-Hillard scandal and from other issues. I understand that. And right when our commission, a brand-new commission, was first empaneled by Mayor Villarreal, we went after any kind of inefficiency or waste that we could find, whether it was through the budget process or through a very, very vigorous oversight, I think probably unprecedented as far as commission oversight is concerned. And as I say, in two years of sitting down with that budget over five and six-day periods and subjecting it to really the most thorough scrutiny, no one is going to claim, of course, that all inefficiency has been eradicated. But I think we've come a long way. And, you know, to the extent that we've had instances of contractors, for instance, receiving more than they were entitled to, we've gone after that. And we're continuing to do that. That is an effort that is going on, you know. I'm committed to ensuring that contractors do not get more than what it is that they're entitled to under contracts with the department.
Well, speaking of contracts, if you do get the increases that you're seeking, will you have to man power on staff or will you have to do additional hiring or get more contractors to do the work?
We will definitely have to do additional hiring. And in the meantime, we will have to contract out. And this is a conversation that we're having with the labor unions to make sure that this can be done. Let's also not forget that in 1998, the department lost a vast number of its workforce, perhaps 3,000, at a time when it was being downsized very rapidly and very substantially. In the last 10 years, the city has grown, its needs have grown, its infrastructure has continued to age. And yet we have not added the personnel in order to meet the needs of the city. We have to do that. And that too is part of the rate increases that we're seeking.
Two more quick questions, if I may. What happens if the increases turn down or you don't get as much as you've requested?
You know, I believe that when one determines that something is necessary for the good of the city and one has that conviction, you don't give up. You go for it and you talk to as many people who will listen to you in order to convince them of the need. I am personally determined to do everything I can to show our good faith, our openness, our needs to the City Council, to the E and D committee members, to the Budget Committee members, of course, to the mayor and his office, and to the neighborhood councils and to Angelenos generally. And I'm not even thinking that the rate increases will not take effect. I'm convinced that they will. You know, Angelenos are generally very enlightened, very progressive. They understand that government has a role to play. And I think they will give us their confidence in moving forward to deal with the challenges that we face.
Very serious subject, but before we let you go, how about a quick energy-saving tip? What do you think that Angelenos ought to do to help you on the consumption side the most?
Oh, the consumption side, the energy conservation side, the energy-efficient side is very, very important. And I would first of all suggest, please go on to ladwp.com and take a look at the list of rebates that there are. If only you will switch to, you know, an energy-efficient refrigerator or a water-efficient washer, I think $250 on just changing the, you know, your washing machine to something that's more efficient and which will save you money. If you're a small business, there's a Small Business Direct Install Program where a DWP will actually provide $2,500 in order to allow your lighting and your small business premises to be changed so that you'll use less energy and have your bill cut at the same time.
And of course, several of the council members have just gone solar at home, so they're on your side as well.
Yes, indeed.
David Nahai, General Manager, Department of Water and Power, thanks very much for coming in and joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure being with you. Thank you.
Again, the action to increase the power and water rates was held over for one week so the council members might get more information. You can listen to City Council meetings as well as committee and commission meetings on the telephone by using the city's council phone system. In the downtown area, dial 213-621-CITY. In West LA, dial 310-471-CITY. For the San Pedro area, dial 310-547-CITY. And in the San Fernando Valley, dial 818-904-9450. Just follow the recorded instructions for the meetings you want to hear. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. On Saturday and Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending March 28, 2008. On behalf of Kathy Easton and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Poguejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning. Today is Tuesday, April 1st. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Thank you to councilmembers Alecon, Cardenas, Han, Weisar, Labange, Perry, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, and Zine. We are expecting one more councilmember, Reyes. If this is your first time to the Los Angeles City Council, we meet Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Also, you can access this information to www.lacity.org or Channel 35. And Mr. Reyes as well is here. So, Mr. Clerk, let's begin our meeting.
Alecon, Cardenas, Grul, Han, Weisar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, thirteen members present, and a quorum. Madam President.
Thank you. First item of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Yes. Mr. Reyes moves. Mr. Weisar seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Those will be approved.
Madam President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute.
Yes. Could I ask, Mr. Reyes, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? If I could ask everyone to please rise.
Thank you, Madam President. Please all rise. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic. Justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, next order of business.
On the regular agenda, items one and two are business improvement district ordinances noticed for public hearing.
Colleagues, any specials on item number one and two? Any specials? If not, Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes.
Thank you. Next item?
Items three through fourteen are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, colleagues, specials? Seven by Mr. Zine. Other specials, colleagues? This is three through fourteen. If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes.
Yes.
Number eleven, please, special?
Eleven special. Okay, we'll just reconsider that real quickly. If we can reconsider item number eleven, Madam Clerk, please open the roll in reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes.
Thank you. That'll be called special.
Thank you.
Next items?
Items fifteen through thirty-seven are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Yes, Mr. Rosendahl? Not yet. We'll do that after these items, and we'll be ready to go. Thank you. Any specials, colleagues, between fifteen and thirty-seven? Yes, Mr. Labange?
Yeah, I requested Mr. Parks thirty-six on the table.
Okay.
If you could hold thirty-six.
We will hold that on the table.
Call it special.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other specials on items fifteen through thirty-seven? Fifteen through thirty-seven?
Madam President, there is apparently going to be a substantive motion on thirty I. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
You said thirty I? Okay, we will hold thirty I on the desk.
You wish to take up the balance?
Yes. So, colleagues, we will take up the balance of those items. Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes.
Thank you. Those items have been approved. Next items?
On the supplemental agenda, items thirty-eight through forty are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, and there is a card on thirty-nine.
Ms. Perry? Thirty-nine? Okay. Thank you. Next?
That would leave thirty-eight and forty.
Seeing no specials on items thirty-eight and forty, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen eyes.
Thank you. Those items have been approved. Next item?
That would take council back to the items called special or public comment?
We will go to public comment at this time. Like to call up Sky Anderson and Michael Steger, followed by Olga Hill.
I'm Sky Anderson, a resident of Hollywood, LA, for eight years, and a community activist. I want to compliment Ms. Perry on her new hat. It really looks nice. I just left the mayor's office when I suggested that one of his staff members, the mayor, either contact the governor's office or the president's office about calling out the National Guard for Drew Street, considering a state of emergency, because obviously the Los Angeles Police Department doesn't have the ability to handle some of these things. It's not Mr... It's not the police officers to pull off. It's just that they don't have enough resources. LA has the lowest percentage of police officers to population any other city that I know about. We have some great councilmembers. Mr. Rosendahl survived the Adelphia Cable scandal. He's well-liked by his people who used to work for him. I talked to one of the directors that used to work for him in Santa Monica, and I told him Bill is shining on the city council. He says, "Yes, that's where Bill belongs." And he's old enough, Mr. Rosendahl, to say, even call Mr. Rosendahl by his first name. He says, "Yes, that's where Bill belongs. You're a good man." And Mr. Garcetti is a great leader. If he wants to take the third term, sometimes he wants to please people, and he falls to lobbyists. But most of the time, he's a very good person who wants to help people. Mr. Labange has that reputation, a very good person who wants to help people. My suggestion is, this drug and the gang issue isn't going away. It's getting worse and worse. I've talked to a black lady who drives a big bus today, and she's very practical, and she says gangs are getting bigger and bigger and bigger. They can stop drugs if they want to. They can call out the National Guard and put them around the border and stop them coming in. I don't know about that, but I've talked to the owner of a local newspaper. He says, "We need to get federal help for this problem." Saying you can't do something isn't a sign of weakness, it's a sign of strength, and it might make someone a political hero. We called out the National Guard and solved this problem. This is not Drew Street. It's getting worse and worse and worse. Some areas live in complete terror of the gangs. So, if you want to be a hero, you want to do the right thing, you might form a task force of Ms. Han, Mr. Rosendahl, whoever really cares about people, and tell the mayor that you'd like him to call out the National Guard. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sky.
Make you a hero for the people.
Thank you. Michael Steger? Michael Steger, followed by Olga Hill?
Yeah, sir. Good morning, City Council. I've spoken here before regarding the Homeowners and Bank Protection Act. I'm speaking today on behalf of... Regarding the expected half a billion dollar shortfall for the Los Angeles City Council, Los Angeles City, for next year's fiscal revenue. And I want to start with a joke. What did they say to the king who had no clothes? "I can see your bare stern." So, we've obviously got a major financial and economic crisis in the country, which is impacting cities like Los Angeles. And the reason I want to brief... A few things. One is that the city of Detroit just passed the Homeowners and Bank Protection Act, or a resolution based upon that. The city of Detroit has called upon the United States Congress to address the home foreclosure and financial crisis. This goes along with Indianapolis, with Pittsburgh, with Philadelphia. And Philadelphia just called on behalf of its sheriff's testimony that they stop all foreclosures for one month, because they're facing a hemorrhaging of foreclosures because of the economic crisis. And they don't find it within their moral capacity to foreclose on these people. So, the sheriff is not going to evict anyone right now in Philadelphia for next month. This is evidence that city councils like this one can take it upon them to address this crisis. And so, I'd be happy to meet with any city council office today regarding this issue and a resolution coming from Los Angeles. In Los Angeles area, we've had Bell Gardens and Pomona have passed resolutions calling for this as well. It's imperative that the city councilmen consider this idea. Call upon the United States Congress in the presidential election year to address a crisis you personally cannot solve. Thank you.
Thank you. Olga Hill, followed by Creighton Jones, and followed by Victoria Torres.
Okay. Good morning to everybody, and I would ask you to please pay attention. I know you have other interests, but I take my time to come here, so please respect it. Studies show... This was an immediate release news that happened on March 20th. Studies show Autry gained control of the Southwest Museum using a misleading merger balance sheet. Exposes Jean Autry Museum's long-touted $100 million endowment fee. Los Angeles, March 20. A study released today concludes that in a merger agreement document signed on behalf of the Autry Western Heritage Museum in March 2003, Jackie Autry, the widow of singing cowboy Jean Autry, and other officers gave a misleading balance sheet to the board of the Southwest Museum that showed the Autry has current assets exceeding $100 million, when in reality, the Autry had a $98 million pledge to contribute payable upon the death of Mrs. Autry. This study by Mr. Jack B. Siegel of Charity Governance Consulting LLC states, "The Autry Museum was not in much better financial condition than the Southwest Museum," was the pledge is removed from the analysis. Ignoring the pledge is appropriate, given the fact that a significant portion of it will not be converted into cash for some two decades when actuarial tables are taken into account. Despite the widespread benefits from increased transparency, the Autry Museum will choose... Still chooses to keep the pledge. Its terms and the circumstances surrounding it are shrouded mystery. Mr. Jack B. Siegel is a national respected author. I will pass this. Hopefully, someone makes copies for all of you, because you need to know this.
Yes. If you give it to the guard, he will make sure... Our officer will make sure that we get copies. Thank you very much. Creighton Jones, followed by Victoria Torres, and then will be Joaquin Castellanos.
All right. So, what I'd like to do today is to read for you the resolution that was passed in the city of Bell Gardens around the Homeowner and Bank Protection Act that Michael had mentioned earlier. So, and this is a small city, but if they can pass this, then surely the city of Los Angeles can pass this. The resolution reads as follows. "A resolution of the City Council of Bell Gardens urging the United States Congress to implement the Homeowners and Bank Protection Act of 2007. Whereas, the onrushing financial crisis engulfing home mortgages, debt instruments of all types, and the banking system of the United States threatens to set off an economic depression worse than the 1930s. And whereas, millions of American citizens are threatened with foreclosure and loss of their homes over the upcoming months, according to studies released by Reality Tract and Moody'sEconomy.com. And whereas, this financial crisis is now threatening the integrity of both the states and federally chartered banks, as typified by the run on deposits of Countrywide Financial in California during the months of August, and such as banking collapse would wipe out the life savings of American citizens and drastically undermine the economic stability of our states and cities. Whereas, in a similar financial crisis in the 1930s, President Franklin D. Roosevelt intervened to protect the banks and homeowners. For example, in 1933, he introduced legislation as a, quote, 'declaration of national policy.' It goes on and says, "Now, therefore, be it further resolved that the City Council of Bell Gardens hereby endorse the Homeowner and Bank Protection Act of 2007, as initiated by economist Lyndon H. LaRouche Jr. This crisis is such that it requires emergency action that only the United States Congress has the capacity to enact. Congress must move quickly to keep people in their homes and avert social chaos."
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here.
And we will have copies available for all of you.
Great. If you give them to the guard. Thank you very much. Victoria Torres, Joaquin Castellanos, and then Monica Harmon.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'd love to give you a little history about Boyle Heights. It's a historical, cultural community that accepted Jews, American Indians, Armenians, Japanese, Chinese, African-American, Russians, Europeans, and Hispanics. You name it. All nationalities were living in Boyle Heights, side by side, for over 130 years. Nowadays, a lot of people are doing positive things. Today, I'm here to talk about a mural that an artist has given to Cultural Affairs, which they approved for $195,000 of taxpayers' monies. I want this mural destroyed. It shows a negative aspect to Boyle Heights, which is bringing us down. There's a lot of things that we've been fighting for, for years, to get rid of in our community, like street vendors, dogs loose, running the streets, beer drinkers that have loud parties that last all night. You know, I'm here today to ask the councilmembers to please vote to have this mural destroyed, that they want to put up on our new police station in Boyle Heights. Thank you.
Thank you. Joaquin?
Yes. Good morning, councilmembers. And I just took the day off to come here and express my opposition to the mural that is going to... They wanted to put up the new police station. It doesn't represent the community that lives there. It doesn't represent me. I'm a Latino. I come here to have a better life in the United States, and that mural doesn't inspire me to go with my dream that I came to this country. I was just here to invite you to look at it and see if this is something that you would like to have in your district. This is something not positive for kids, for the family, for all the people who wants to work hard to have a better life in this country. This is a public police station. This is a place where you go to follow the rules, the constitution of this country. This mural does not follow the rules, and we do live in a country with rules, and that we need to respect the law. Because, like everybody says, we love America, but to love it, you have to love and respect the laws first. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here. Monica Harmon?
Good morning. I have copies of the mural and some of the images. This... Can somebody take these? So, it gives you an idea of why we're here, why we are outraged that the Cultural Affairs spent $195,000 for this eight-by-a-hundred-foot piece of... Sorry, cochinada, which is like junk in Spanish. This artist admitted in the LA Times that he was shocked that he was chosen, because he has a dim view of LAPD. The mural has gangbangers, illegal vendors. It depicts the worst negative stereotypes of Latinos. We speak English. We're educated. Our fathers are war veterans. My father's an Air Force war veteran. He is proud of this country, proud of the American flag. The other thing is, we support our police officers. There's more images of gangbangers on this mural than police officers. You know, they have ROTC students at Roosevelt High School. Eighty percent of them go to a four-year university. But if you look at the images, everybody's head is down. There's no pride. You know, us as Latinos, we're not what that is depicted, is depicted in that mural. This artist is taking this around the country. He's labeled it "The History of Los Angeles." We want this mural destroyed. It does not represent what we're about. We don't want this happening to another community. Councilman Ed Reyes, you're going to have a new Rampart Station. I would strongly suggest you check in with Cultural Affairs. The scary thing is, Councilman Weisar knew nothing about this, and he's been in office for two years. This mural was supposed to go up this month. And so, if Cultural Affairs can do that without anybody in the city council knowing about it, what else are they doing behind your back, putting up throughout the city? We have Latino LAPD officers from Hollandbeck that won the Medal of Valor. Why isn't that depicted in the image? So, I think you get our message. We're upset. It's all over the country. This thing needs to be destroyed. Thank you.
Thank you, Monica. Our next speaker is Martha Cisneros, followed by Yolanda Hernandez.
Good morning, councilmembers. I am Martha Cisneros, American citizen, born here. This mural does not represent me, does not represent my family, does not represent my neighbors. It is disgusting, and I am in the mode of destroying it. It shouldn't be put anywhere. It shouldn't be moved anywhere. It shouldn't even be shown anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Yolanda Hernandez, followed by Leganangi Chase-Siemi.
Good morning. My name is Yolanda Hernandez, and I have... I was born and raised and still reside for 72 years in Boyle Heights, and I am offended by this mural. It does not depict my neighborhood. I think this artist just drove down formerly my beloved Brooklyn Avenue, now known as Sesaf Chavez, and I think it should be destroyed. I've never pushed a cart, never driven any of these lunch wagons, never hung my clothes on the fence, so it does not depict my beloved Boyle Heights. Thank you.
Thank you so much. After the speaker, we will go out to the San Fernando Valley after this last speaker.
Madam President, if you would allow me your indulgence here, I just want to address some of the speakers who came in and thank them for coming in about the mural that is proposed. The proposed mural was proposed before I came in office. It's a process that's been happening before I came in office. And I live in Boyle Heights. I'm proud to live in Boyle Heights, and that mural definitely does not reflect the hard-working people, proud of our culture who live there now. We are going to have a community meeting, April 12th, to review this, and we certainly know that it's not going to go up on that police station, because it does not reflect what our community is all about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar.
Good morning. A long time ago...
A long time ago, when I was a teenager, the notion that society can hate you was first brought to my attention. This really disturbed me in a manner that I cannot describe, because it then dawned upon me that society might in fact be hating me. I realized then that society was imposing itself onto my affairs, and that society was a strong controlling factor, determining the success or failure to any personal activities which I embarked on. In his book called American Constitutional Law, Lawrence H. Tribe, a former professor at law from Harvard University, states that, "For we are talking necessarily about rights of individuals or groups against the larger, against the larger community and against the majority, even an overwhelming majority of the society as a whole. Subject to all of the perils of anti-majoritarian judgment, courts and all who take seriously their constitutional oaths must ultimately define and defend rights against government in terms independent of consensus or majority will." In this quote, Lawrence H. Tribe is basically saying that it is wrong for society to victimize and hate an individual or group of individuals. Furthermore, he is also saying that the courts have a duty to define and defend rights that belong to individuals, that belong to the individual or group of individuals against the government. Most importantly, he emphasizes the point that, as the courts define and defend these rights, they should disregard any opinions manifested by the majority will of society. In this regard, I demand for society stating, in this regard, I demand for society, starting from this day onwards, to honor this statement from this book on American Constitutional Law. I have been a victim to this type of abuse by society for a very long time now, and I strongly demand for my rights of privacy and personhood to be restored without compromise.
Thank you very much for being here today. We're out to the San Fernando Valley. Sharon Brewer?
Hi, Sharon Brewer. Public comment. I made a request to see the financial records for a neighborhood council. The records I wanted to see were copies of the demand warrants, bank statements showing credit card purchases, petty cash purchases, and the receipts showing exactly what was purchased for a certain time period. The treasurer said that he didn't make any copies of the financial records I requested because he didn't want to waste paper. How can keeping copies of expenditures made by a neighborhood council using public funds be wasting paper? I contacted Dunn Funding about the NC not keeping copies of the receipts of expenditures, and the response was, "They should keep copies." It seems that Dunn is not requiring NCs to keep copies of expenditures locally so that the public can see exactly where and for what public funds are being used for. I was told by Dunn Funding, if I wanted to see the financial records for this NC, I would have to go downtown to their office in Los Angeles. Why should I have to drive to downtown LA to see records that Dunn should require to be available locally with the NC? The same NC treasurer doesn't seem to have a problem with paying for the copying of more than 18,000 newsletters. Dunn Funding needs to be told that neighborhood councils must keep copies of all financial records locally so that the public can look at them. My question is, if you're not keeping copies of the receipts, then there must be something wrong? Because the only way people can see what's going on with the spending is to actually see the receipts. Some of the bookwork that you're given is not specific enough, and even the online funding that you can get from the Dunn website is really unclear. So, I would appreciate somebody talking to Dunn about mandatory copies of financial records. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Dan Weissman, followed by Michael Carrion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say publicly, the public comment is added into by people who spend several hours getting ready to come here and who are here in order to give their opinions to you, 15 members of the city council. I want to commend Mr. Weisar for responding to some of the earlier comments today, but I must again say that the attention span of many of you is short enough for me to want to prescribe Ritalin for you. Now, that being said, did I get to you, Madam Chair? Thank you. That being said, I want to go into the City Department of Water and Power's rate structure, which is being put before you again as a continuance tomorrow. That is a package of two very large bills, 3247 and 3248. I would suggest, at this late date and at the earliest possible date for yourselves, to separate those two things. Mr. Smith's bill, Mr. Smith's amendment to that package affects the water directly. The court case, which should be heard and should be settled within the next few days, we hope, may have big impact on the water bill. Whether you will accept that water bill or not is problematic. Whether you will reject it and accept the 66 neighborhood councils who have suggested that you defer that for the time being remains to be seen. Then, you have eight other amendments to deal with tomorrow, which can have profound effect on the Department of Water and Power, power bill, and those need to be vetted, made public. I just came from the city clerk's office. They are not in the record yet, they're not available to the public yet. I must complain again in this location that those things are very important to all of our neighborhood councils, and we haven't had the time to adequately receive and respond to them. For once I will be on time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Weissman. Michael Carrion, followed by Heinrich Kiefer, and followed by Mr. Juarez.
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion, and once again, the city is shoving something down our throat that we don't want, a mural. A mural that is not only degrading, but it's just the way the city works. This is just like a VIA program, project that's being held in Lincoln Heights, where all the rules that you guys put in place just go out the door because somebody is doing favors for somebody else behind doors. It's hypocrisy at its best. You guys put in place rules and regulations, and then when it's convenient for you, you guys yourselves break them and bend them. So, basically, what you're stating to us is that we don't count. We vote you in office, and then you take the initiative to do what you please. At this VIA meeting, there were over 250 people, residents, trying to tell Mr. Reyes that this is not what we want. But representatives of Mr. Reyes's office were telling us, "So what? This is what we're going to give you. Be quiet, sit down, shut up, and go away, because you're going to get it." Okay? Again, I also read in LA Times, Ms. Perry said that this council was full of a bunch of chauvinist pigs. Now I understand why. It's a good old boys. You scratch my back, I scratch your back. Ms. Perry, I agree with you. At times, it could be that. Not all the time, but at times, it is. Mr. Smith made comments of the Santa Clarita. I happen to be an Angelino, born and raised, and I drive that five freeway every day up to Castag. I happen to be one of those people causing the traffic jam going that way. But yet, you want to build a huge building right here on Grand Avenue without taking into consideration the traffic jams on the overwhelmed freeway we have here.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. Heinrich, followed by Mr. Juarez.
Yes, my name is Heinrich Kiefer. I am the immediate past president of the Historic Holland Park Neighborhood Council. I may not be able to be here tomorrow, so I want to echo the comments of my cohort here regarding the water portion of the bill. Being that it's an illegal challenge, that may be something that should be postponed. The electrical portion of that is certainly something that should, all of the considerations should be taken into consideration before any decisions made. Again, the people are counting on you, and I know many of the council members have stood up and asked the tough questions, so hopefully some more tough questions will be asked tomorrow of the Commission for Water and Power. Also, I want to echo the sentiments of Olga Hall regarding the Southwest Museum. Whether many of you know it or not, it is a council member, Weisar, issue. He's in discussion over here. Nevertheless, I've been asked through the mayor's office and others to keep that local with our councilmen. What's happened in our community is we have a loss of a resource, an asset, a museum. Through issues related to the foundation that ran the museum years ago, the Autry saw an opportunity to merge with that museum, not unlike an organization that might merge with the observatory or some other asset in the community, perhaps the Coliseum, I'm not sure. A struggling resource that was merged, the Autry saw an opportunity. Now, what we see now is the commitments of funding that the Autry had made originally in the merger in 2003 cannot be fulfilled. So, I call that to your attention. Take serious what's recently been exposed as to the funding that the Autry has, their cash in hand. These are going to be issues that will come to play in whether this city decides to lease new opportunity grounds in Griffith Park to the Autry organization. So, keep that in mind. We'd love to see the city be a great city, but let's work together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Juarez?
Good morning, public council. My name is Mr. Juarez, and I'd like to know why the police officer of Rampart Number Two Hollandbeck Station is still killing youngsters on the Forgotten Place or Ramona Garden. Last 12 of March, they killed in cold blood Sergio Rosas, only 21-year-old, and one year before, they killed Mauricio Cornejo, 21-year-old, in cold blood. And I've been waiting for justice for 20 years, and my case is in the Superior Court, Department 81. So, I'd like to know why I got away so long time. 20 years waiting for justice is too much. Wake up, Justice Department, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker, Roman Setmackarski. Roman, please.
Good morning. Dear City Council regular session, I am a senior 74-plus-year-old, disabled, low-income, US citizen, a victim of 1994 Northish earthquake. I request you to protect my civil right of decent life from mockery created by Housing Section 8 Office of Housing Authority of City of Los Angeles. After 1994 Northish earthquake, FEMA financially helped me and my now-late mother to rent unit number 65060 with the FEMA issued federal Section 8 voucher, valid throughout the United States since May 16, 1994. I had never seen this voucher because it was directly given to landlord of unit number 65060, Mr. Joel Linderman, through Hasla Section 8 Office. The landlord accepted it. During 13 years and eight months, Hasla Section 8 Office managed this case, paid Section 8 portion of rent, even after my 100% unlawful forced eviction from unit number 65060 on January 2, 2008. Annually inspected unit number 65060, but Hasla Section 8 Office did not protect me from 100% unlawful forced eviction from unit number 65060 on January 2, 2008, despite my written information about all details of this personal tragedy, Tom Bass Person, and beyond. My requirement to return my federal Section 8 voucher, valid throughout the USA, after this 100% unlawful forced eviction from unit number 65060 on January 02, 2008, was not answered.
Roman, if we could ask you just to conclude your comments.
Okay, okay. I'll just read it. I'm sorry.
That's right, and if you'd like to give us a copy of your, we can make a copy of your testimony if that would be useful to share with our staff.
Okay. So, you want me just to give it to clerk?
We'll give it to our officers here, they'll make a copy, they'll have a copy made, and so that we can distribute it to all the council members.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here. I appreciate it. That closes public comment, colleagues. One item we need to reconsider is item 30, the public comment card came after that, and then we'll have another item by Mr. Rosendahl. First, item number 30, if we could reconsider, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl?
Yes, Madam President, I'd like us to reconsider item number one from last Friday.
Okay. Could open the roll on reconsideration of item number one from last Friday?
And Madam President, for the record, the council file number is 041362.
Thank you. So, we could open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
13 ayes.
That'll be held on the desk as special. Colleagues, there has been a request for, yes, Mr. Wesson?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to know if this is the appropriate time to announce that this past Friday at 10:23, my son and his wife gave birth to my first grandchild, who is six pounds, eight ounces, 19 inches long. His name is Patrick Jeremiah Wesson, my first grandson, and he's a boy, my first.
It's always a good time to make that announcement, Mr. Wesson, so congratulations on your first grandson. With that, yes, Mr. Cardenas?
Herb, you and I have known each other a long time, and I've been, I know you're getting old, and I've been wanting to call you grandpa for a long time. Congratulations, grandpa.
Oh, just, Madam President, to set the record straight, I do have difficulty with, I am a very young grandfather. So, so they're going to call me, he will call me G. Poppy.
G. Poppy.
G. Poppy.
All right, we'll remember that.
G. Poppy.
And with that, Ms. Perry asked if we would have item number 39 out of order, and we, Ms. Perry, let me know when you'd like to do public comment.
Yeah, I'd like to just say a few introductory words and then have the folks come up and speak. On Friday, April the 4th, will be the 40th anniversary of the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. In memory of him, Councilwoman Parks and Councilwoman Han, and myself included, ask our colleagues to join with us in calling for a symbolic moratorium on violence and killing for 40 hours from April the 4th through April the 6th. I know that there may be an amending motion out here, but to tell you, violence is ever-present in our districts, it is something we deal with on a daily basis. As recently as last week, when I went to the site at 42nd and Figueroa, where a young man who was bound for college, comes from a good family, was basically executed on the sidewalk along with someone else, the violence in our communities is unceasing. And so, for those who may think that this is an empty gesture, I think this will raise the level of discourse, not only in our community, but hopefully in communities that haven't been affected as much as we have, to talk about it, to talk about it within the context of Dr. King's life, to talk about ways to prevent violence, and to talk about how we can work together in communities as community activists, as elected officials, to try to create closer relationships so that we can preempt violence rather than always having to respond to violence. So, with that, Madam Chair, if you wouldn't mind letting Dr. Hutchinson at all speak, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. I will call on the next speakers. Earl Afari Hutchinson will be our first speaker. He'll be followed by Morris Bigmoney Griffin.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Jan Perry, and thank you very much on the city council, city council members. This is certainly a bittersweet moment. The bitter part of it is, we're here, two reasons, to celebrate memorialized, pay tribute to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. on the 40th anniversary of his assassination, murder. It's just incredible that 40 years has passed from April 4th, 1968, to April 4th, Friday, 2008. Much has happened in that period in America. But we also know something else, much tragically, good and bad, but tragically in this case, has happened in the City of Los Angeles. We've seen, in recent months, a spike up in murders, homicides again. We've seen in recent months a spike up in murders, homicides again. We thought we turned the corner on that, not the case. Just in the past few days, look at what we have seen. We've seen two young people gunned down on 42nd and Figaroa, reference was made to that, Jamil Shaw, the shooting of LeVarie Elzy, it goes on and on and on. Dr. King was the world's foremost and beloved champion, one of them, of nonviolence, peace and justice, but especially nonviolence. Someone with the great legacy of a Dr. King, to lose his life to murder violence, and now in the City of Los Angeles, as we approach the 40th anniversary of the King assassination, so many young people gunned down, against the spirit of what Dr. King worked for, but also what Dr. King lost his life and was a victim of, namely murder violence of the most heinous kind. On the 40th anniversary, beginning at 6:01 PM Friday until 10:01 Sunday, April 6th, we, the organizations here and their number of families in support of victims of violence, are calling for a 40-hour moratorium in honor of Dr. King in his memory, send another message 40 years later, calling on residents in the City of Los Angeles, no murders, no homicides, no physical violence. It may not happen, given the fact that people are people, and we have no control over that. What we do have control over is sending the message in the name and the memory of Dr. Martin Luther King. So that's our call. And it's a challenge, too. It's a heavy challenge. It's a heavy burden, and we're asking the City Council, join with us in support of the 40-hour moratorium, King assassination moratorium against killing. Join with us. 40 years later, the residents, legacy, memory of Dr. King can still save a message, send the message, and the message is, save lives.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hutchinson. Morris Griffin, followed by Eddie Jones Jr. and Lita Heron.
Good morning, City Council. I rise this morning on April Fool's Day, distraught, upset with the fact that we're having a great deal of violence in our city. So we're asking for this 40-hour moratorium here in Los Angeles. We're also asking, I believe that we need to look at, what can we do to solve and resolve the problem? We can sit up here and talk about asking people to cease fire, but I believe that we can legislate where we can take these shot callers out of prisons and put them in a prison in another state. When you have sheep and you have a sheepdog, that sheepdog guides the herd, but when you take that sheepdog away, the herd seems to go astray. And all I'm trying to say is that if we today can consider legislating, taking the shot callers out of our prisons that are causing the Jamil Shaws, that are causing these young men to be shot and killed the next day when we talk about illegals getting a gun the next day when they get out of prison, this is by design. And so what I'm saying to you, put it in your mind that there's a better way to solve and resolve our problem. Another way is to put cameras in our districts where we see where there is a great deal of gang violence, to curtail graffiti, to curtail and scare them away. We see where our intersections are showing that people are using a little more restraint when they go through these red lights, when they go through these because they're caught on camera. I'm asking you to consider putting it in alleys, in the valleys, so that we can strategize to get our people to realize that we can control all behavior if we do it right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jones?
My name is Eddie Jones. Hello to City Council, President of the Los Angeles Civil Rights Association. We've analyzed and evaluated the killings that have been going on, and it's a rash of killings. We have parents burying children instead of children burying their parents. Martin Luther King said, "I might not get there with you." And he's not, he's not here with us physically, but he's here with us spiritually. And we all know that Dr. King fought for one thing. It didn't matter if you were black, white, Asian, Latino, he fought for peace. And that's what we're looking for today, we're looking for peace. Dr. King had a dream, and his dream is still alive, and we are the ones who keep his dream alive. Together, we can make change. It's not about I or me, but we, and what we all can do to stop the killing. It is a way to do it, but we must work together. We must work vigorously. We must work day in and day out, and we must use every form of stopping the killing that we possibly can to do it. It can't get done by just the LAPD, it just can't get done by City Council. It's gonna take all entities, including community, constituents, and stakeholders. Together we stand, and divided, we shall fall. Let's remember never to forget that Dr. King slept a million nights dreaming about how can we do this together? But guess what? Before he could finish his dream, he was murdered. LeVarie Elzy, a young man that was in the back of a red vehicle in the Harbor Gateway area, was shot, six years old, shot in the head. His mother was eight months pregnant. Why did they attack that vehicle? I have no idea. But I want you to know something, how good God is. I've been talking with the LeVarie Elzy family every day, and LeVarie Elzy was taken off the breathing respirator just last night. That's the good news. The good news is that he's now opening his eyes, and he's responding again. But guess what? He's one of many victims. He survived. The young man Clifton Jr. didn't survive. He was gonna graduate from college in one month, from Cal State Northridge, with a bachelor's degree. He'll never see that day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lita Heron?
Thank you for allowing us to meet with you this morning over this critical issue. I'm here representing the voiceless, the mothers that have suffered the greatest tragedy they'll ever know, plus the children that were snatched too soon from their families and loved ones. I know that the homicide statistics for March has been over 60 fatalities in this city at the hands of violence. I'm only gonna read you the names of the youngest. 11-year-old Jose Luis Garcia, 13-year-old Curtis Richardson, 13-year-old Anthony E. Escobar, 15-year-old Miguel Osuna, 16-year-old Michael Fabian, we all know about 17-year-old Jamil Shaw Jr., 17-year-old Richard Lopez, 18-year-old Jimmy Tran and his friend Danny Chan shot at the same double homicide, the same double shooting. Ricardo Rivera Jr. was killed by a 13-year-old child who walked up to him, a neighbor on the street, and shot him dead. Please forgive me if I mispronounce the names because it is unintentional. Harrio Reyes, 18, one that got overlooked, 19-year-old Antoine Coe, killed alone on a bus stop, coming home in his work uniform, on a bus stop alone with no help, no exit strategy, no protection for him. Antoine Russell, 19, Eric Cabayo, 19, 21-year-old Sergio Jose Rojas, and of course, we've talked about the latest casualty that's significant to us, another imminent college graduate, Clifton Hebert Jr. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I think there are probably other council members who may want to say a few words, but I believe this symbolic expression of a desire for a better and safer quality of life for the residents that we represent and those who have been unduly impacted by violence on a daily basis, this is a way to reach out and to encourage them to engage in dialogue, and so I hope that we can achieve that goal by doing this motion, and thanks to the activists who showed up here today. And I do this not only for myself, but speaking on behalf of Mr. Parks. So with that, there may be others on the queue, but thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have quite a few. Mr. Alacon, followed by Ms. Hahn, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Weisar, and Mr. Labange.
Members, this is a very sad time when we reflect on what the assassination of Martin Luther King means to us, and I know that to do nothing would be to lose an opportunity to reflect and to move forward in a positive way. So I want to commend the sponsors of this motion for taking this step, to remind us as a society that we cannot let Martin Luther King's death pass without substantive reflection on what that means for America and what it means in each and every one of our communities where people are dying daily. But I do have concern about the language specifically, and would like to offer a very friendly amendment. I have talked to the sponsors, and I do believe I have their support. First of all, I don't think we should do anything symbolic about this day, it should be tangible. But secondly, a moratorium on violence and killing is something we should support 365 days a year and every minute that we live. So my friendly amendment would be to move that the resolution be amended to resolve the following in lieu of the resolve contained in the resolution. The language is a substitution of all instances of a moratorium on violence and killing. Therefore, it be resolved that the City Council declare a 40-hour period to promote peace, justice, and nonviolence, and build a dialogue and awareness of the root causes of violence and killing in our communities during the period specified in the motion. Basically, it gives us a challenge to use these 40 hours to work with our community to really think about the root causes of violence and killing, and to do everything we can to stop them. So it's a very friendly amendment. I believe I have the support of the sponsors. They're waving, so I take that as a yes, and I urge your support.
Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, and thank, I want to thank Councilmember Parks, who's not here, for bringing this forward and joining myself and Councilwoman Perry in bringing forth this resolution. Thanks to all of you who came this morning to speak. I remember very clearly where I was when I got the news that Dr. King had been assassinated. Of course, he had been to Los Angeles on his first visit earlier and had spent a long time with my own father, Kenny Hahn, visiting with my dad, talking to my dad about his hopes, his dreams for America, and it was after his assassination that my father called Mrs. King and asked her if it would be all right if he named the newly-created, hadn't been built yet, hospital in Watts after him, calling it the Martin Luther King Jr. Hospital. And here we are, 40 years from then, certainly closer to the dream that I believe he envisioned, but not there yet, not there yet, and not there yet because of the violence. And when I think about the Poor People's Campaign that he began and that the Southern Christian Leadership Conference still carries on today, nothing, I believe, keeps a community or neighborhoods in poverty more than violence. And when I think about the community of Watts, which I represent, and we've already had four murders just this year, it was a very violent time in 2005 when we had in one month 19 gang-related shootings, seven homicides. And knowing that when I tried to get people to invest in housing or to invest in economic development, bringing restaurants there or bringing retail there, the first thing that people will say, it's a violent community, and that's why economic development does not happen sometimes, is because of the perception, if not the reality, of violence. And I know, and I appreciate this list of those that were the homicides in March, but there's one more that wasn't added. A young man, 15-years-old, just on Friday, March 28th, was gunned down in San Pedro at Six and Gaffi, Miguel Osuna, standing on his porch and murdered right there. I went to a press conference for, with the parents, the family members of Daniel Arviso last Thursday morning, who'd been shot last October, still no, he was only 19, only 19-years-old in the prime of his life, shot down. So if we could have 40 hours, and I don't care how we say it, no violence, no murders, promoting peace, dialoguing, if we could have 40 hours to honor the memory, the legacy of Dr. King, hopefully, the work that we all put into, 40 hours, maybe that would extend to 80 hours, maybe that would extend to 120 hours, maybe that would extend to weeks, a month, wouldn't that be a fabulous tribute to Dr. King? And I know that I work very hard every day to get to the root, root causes of violence, and I know that we can't arrest our way out of this problem. We cannot arrest our way out of the problem. We have to work harder on prevention, intervention, it's our intervention workers frankly who are gonna be out there keeping this peace, after-school programs for our young people, and job training, so that people have a real chance at a quality of life that many people take for granted. So thank you for bringing this forward. I will do everything I can to get the word out to all my constituents that in the memory of Dr. King, there is nothing greater that we could do in Los Angeles than to promote this 40 hours of peace, of nonviolence, and hopefully it will extend beyond that.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. It's an important message that we need to make, but I think about our capacity, our ability as lawmakers, and how we manage the city, and I ponder how it is that we, at times, choose not to support family housing, we at times choose not to provide affordable housing throughout the city, how we get challenged by the Hillside Federations and the homeowner associations, saying, you don't, that building doesn't belong here, but we talk about buildings and brick and mortar without talking about what it does for the people. Kids will have a greater chance, if you let our children live in the districts, we could absorb the type of energy that could fill your playgrounds, can fill your schools, and give them a chance to get out of those census tracts that we have up to 66,000 people in one census tract, others are up to 90,000 people per census tract, 90,000. The city average is 6,000. We as lawmakers have that ability. I believe Martin Luther King was talking about social justice, economic justice, and yet we deny our kids that possibility because of the political pressures, because of the funding pressures. This moratorium, I hope, allows those who choose to prioritize property value over human value, should we look at what we're doing and look at ourselves in the mirror every time we demonize our kids, because we don't let them live where they could or should.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. The saddest thing about 40 years ago is that we have not progressed at all in 40 years since Dr. Martin Luther King was with us. I had the honor and the privilege and the pleasure of being a little 21-year-old kid there in Cleveland, Ohio with him in 1967, as Carl Stokes was on his way to become the first African-American mayor of a large city. I had an evening with Dr. King in the room, talking about the world we were living in, and I was full of hope that we could make the world a better place, and that we could undo the... the world a better place, and that we could undo the injustices that African-Americans have been facing in this country. Dr. King said to me very clearly, young man, I said, why are you doing this? I mean, what motivates you? He said, every day, and I get up, and I'm out there trying to make a difference. That's all we can do, is try to make the world a better place. And he said, young man, I encourage you to do it, because frankly, you'll feel better yourself if you're out there trying to make the world a better place. I never forgot that, never forgot him. And my God, there he was, killed the next year, as was Bobby Kennedy, who I was with and worked for, two of the greatest leaders that our nation had 40 years ago. Well, the sad day is that the killings continue, dropping out of school is dramatic, the war on drugs, which is a war on people, are incarcerating African-Americans and Latinos and whites. We have more people in prison than any place on earth, 2.3 billion. We're less than 5% of the world's population, yet we have 25% of the world's incarceration. We have a criminal industrial system. We spend $55 billion on imprisoning people, more prisons than schools. African-Americans are the largest single ethnic group of homelessness in the Los Angeles area that we see. It is not a pleasant picture today. And for God's sake, and in the name of what's right, not only do we need a moratorium on any kind of violence, we need to put more supports and more systems in place that undo the injustice that African-Americans continue to face in our great nation. Can you imagine if you took drugs out of the gangs' portfolio, so therefore, territory wasn't over where you can sell drugs? And can you imagine if kids didn't make all that money selling these illegal drugs, but knew that the only future they had was more positive experiences, more after-school programs, getting a job, getting higher education? Wouldn't it be great if we, as a nation, had health care for our people instead of the absolute meltdown we have in this nation, and it's all about the rich getting the best health care, when our governor wants to cut back on Medicaid, for God's sake? I mean, this all impacts the African-Americans in so many different ways. So in the memory of one of our great leaders of the 20th century, we need not only to heed his warning about making a difference, but we need to step up to the plate. Where we are today is a disgrace, a real disgrace. Anyhow, that's how I feel. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Weesar.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And we have too much violence. But a lot has also and needs to be said about the Latino and African-American violence against one another. You know, if you look back at our struggles to empower ourselves economically, you look at where we've been and where we're going, we're on the same path. So we shouldn't be tearing each other down, but building each other up. And that's a message we also need to let down, not only in these chambers, but in the streets, where reality is very much different from what we're saying here in these chambers. You know, it's interesting that we're talking about the anniversary of Martin Luther King's death, when yesterday we celebrated Cesar Chavez's birthday, one of the biggest, largest-than-life Latino leaders this country has ever seen. And there is an example of how Latinos and African-Americans can get along. If you think about it, Martin Luther King, one of the greatest African-American leaders, and Cesar Chavez, one of the greatest Latino leaders. When Cesar Chavez was fasting in Delano, California, working for better wages, health care for the farmworkers, Martin Luther King called him and said, I'm with you, brother. I'm with you on the struggle to improve humanity. That, ladies and gentlemen, is a message we need to get down to our streets. And that's our challenge. Our challenge is implementing, putting into action what we're talking about today. Coretta Scott King, she was once asked about her husband and how beautifully he spoke, but she said, if you notice in everything my husband has ever said, he's not only talking about words, most of what he talks about is action. He's calling us to take action, to do something about the injustice we see around us. And that, ladies and gentlemen, is what we've got to do. Action on the streets, where people don't feel they could get a piece of the pie, where people don't feel they have another day to live for, where people don't feel that there's anything at stake for them in their neighborhood or their city. That is our challenge. We need to get down to the streets and make the difference there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weesar. Mr. Labange, followed by Mr. Zine.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I salute the community leadership for this. I salute my colleague, Mr. Parks, who, more than all of us, has experienced as a police officer for over 40 years, and as a police administrator, has seen it firsthand, Ms. Perry and others, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Weesar, all of us in some form or fashion. But I remember, as you remember, you were 21 years old. Well, I was in ninth grade at Thomas R. King when this happened. And it was a different period of time, how it changed what was a step forward to a step backwards. But I think we have to keep stepping, and we have to gather together. And I understand there's going to be a candlelight vigil, and we have to get to the neighborhoods and remind people it's important. I think life is better now than in 1968 for all people. It's not as good as it can be, but life is better. But the violence, though, and the guns, the guns that people use carelessly, two people walking down a street, two guys riding a bicycle near Paramount Pictures, they talk to each other, and they pull out guns and shoot each other for no reason. The guns are a very serious tool to the violence that is here, that has plagued our community. And to remove guns for that is extremely important for it. But for Dr. King and the lesson that he taught so many and has taught in schools today, for Cesar Chavez and his lessons that were taught and continue to be taught, for all people, it's important to remember the past. It's not perfect, by no means, but to move forward and step forward and gather and remember, it can be a better way. And we do have to step back and let others go forward. And the violence, which is insane, must be stopped. But we have to provide love for all people and friendship for all people. And we ask someone to cooperate in that fashion, to make a better city, because it is a scar on the City of Angels that we have this violent homicide and violent shootings that affect the lives of children in the City of Angels.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Zine, followed by Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to acknowledge my colleagues who support this. I also support this. It's interesting that when I hear the names and the age, it's like when you look at the war and you hear about the young people who have been killed in war, they give the age, they give the names. I read in the paper today, a Navy SEAL landed on a grenade and saved three of his mates, the Navy SEAL folks. When I hear about the youth that is being killed, destroyed in our community, when I hear this morning, driving in on the 105 freeway, it's shut down because an individual comes at an off-duty sheriff's deputy with a knife, and the off-duty sheriff's deputy shot the individual. When I hear about a Glendale police officer shot last night by an individual, and his bulletproof vest saved him, another individual's dead. The violence in our society is out of control. I don't think there's any question about it. We talk about homicides in South Bureau, we talk about homicides in the Valley, wherever it is, whether it's a day, a week, or a month, if we can bring something into focus, to have, love your neighbor as you love yourself. When we talk about the holiday season, Christmas time, it seems there's a lull in crime. Families get together, the violence seems to wane itself. Janice Hahn, who was at the gang yesterday with my son, who's a motorcycle officer in South Bureau, who talks all the time about the officer-involved shootings, the officer-involved incidents, the situations that take place, the attacks on the police, the gentleman that talked about more police. We can't solve it with more police. We can help with more police. But it's the community that needs to come together, and for the fellow human being. Dr. Martin Luther King always talked about bringing people together, uniting people, peace. No matter what's your color, no matter what's your ethnicity, bring about peace. So I support this. I hope it lasts. I really hope it lasts. Councilmember Parks, the former chief of police, he's very knowledgeable about the aspects of people who suffer from crime. Councilmember Smith, who's also a reserve officer. Last night, I worked my reserve capacity in South Los Angeles, and the calls came out. Another situation of violence, another situation of a crime, another individual harm. So I support this wholeheartedly, and I thank you for being here. And hopefully, the people of Los Angeles will hear their cries that we are broadcasting about, bring about some peace. The road rage is out of control. Driving down the street, someone's going to shoot you because you looked the wrong way, because they ask you where you're from, you give the wrong answer. That is an out-of-control situation that we need to bring into focus. And it's not just South LA. This epidemic is not only in this community of South LA, but throughout this region, and we need to address it. So again, I thank you for coming forward, for addressing it. And Mr. Parks, who's not here, congratulations for bringing this forward. And hopefully, this can be the beginning of something positive, as Dr. Martin Luther King brought about positive change. We need to bring on positive change. If we don't do it today, tomorrow's too late. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Cardenas.
You know, what's really sad is the Los Angeles Times already commented on this resolution today, and they took the time to actually quote someone who basically said that this is silliness. You know, people said that 40 years ago, and 41 years ago, and 45 years ago about Martin Luther King, about how getting up and marching was silliness, and it wasn't going to make a difference, and it didn't matter. And they said things about Martin Luther King, they actually threw him in jail and tried to stop him from being nonviolent, to try to stop him from making a difference and telling the world that violence has to stop. So one thing that the Los Angeles Times didn't get right, and I hope whoever writes about this tomorrow doesn't try to say that this is silliness, because this moratorium on violence and killing didn't come from the city council. It came from people in the community asking of the elected officials to please set a resolution in place and agree with us that violence has to stop. Agree with us that we have to speak out. Agree with us that we have to create greater awareness. Agree with us that more people have to be tired of this. Agree with us that the blood has to stop. That's what this resolution is. This resolution isn't written in the charter. This resolution is not described in the charter implicitly, but it is described in the Constitution of the United States, it is described in the charter of the City of Los Angeles, it's described that we have to stand up and speak up and speak out when atrocities are happening, when those things are inconsistent with the freedoms that everybody talks about in this country. That's what this resolution is about. This resolution came about in the spirit, the same spirit of Martin Luther King, who made a tremendous grand difference and moved this country forward in a better place, to be a better place. Yet, we're still not perfect, obviously. This moratorium, and I'll speak clearly to the press, this moratorium is not in lieu of the work that we need to get done as a legislative body. It is not in lieu of that work. But it is to remind us of the urgency. And some of us know that very well, but it's to remind us once again of the urgency. It's to remind us that we have much work to do. It's to remind us that we need to do what we can so that the killings will stop, that they will curtail, that perhaps we can get them down as low as possible, as low as humanly possible. That's what this means to me, a reminder that we are not alone, that we pray together, that we wish together, that we hope together, and that also that there's much work that we need to do together to get the work done, because it's going to take hard work. And this moratorium, this resolution, will make a difference. Because, believe it or not, ladies and gentlemen, people on the street, former gang members, people who are interventionists, have actually worked to create amongst themselves, to create truces between gangs, where the killing has, in fact, stopped temporarily, and lives have been saved. We need to learn from that. We need to recognize that wherever the sources may come from, if goodness is out there, if people are willing to put down their guns, if people are willing to put down their gang affiliations and say, I don't want to be a part of this anymore, we need to respect that. We need to encourage that. Because we, standing here in our fancy clothes and suits, are not the ones that are going to get them to put their guns down. It is them who are going to decide when they put the guns down. So this moratorium is not silly. This moratorium is not symbolic. This moratorium in the communities where guns are out and bullets are flying, this is the real deal. This will help. And shame on you if you want to contribute to saying silliness is what this is about, because that's the kind of attitude that people like Martin Luther King had to step over and step across in order to get the job done.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Madam President and members. I think the first thing that I want to say is that I was proud to hear Mr. Weesar get up and say the things that he said. And we, as a council, need to set an example, because obviously, there is a disconnect in the communities where it relates to African-Americans and Latinos. And I think that if we call ourselves leadership, then we should set an example and show that we have far, far more in common than the things that make us different. And so I commend Mr. Weesar for his words. And I want to say it's maybe one of the first times that I've heard somebody stand up and actually say that. So I appreciated that. The community people that are here, for the most part, they have a long history of being on the front line, trying to make things happen. And I'm proud to call them my friends, Big Money Griff and Eddie, a little new on the scene, but consistent, and Willis I've known for 800 years, and Earl and I are very close friends. And it was Earl's idea. And I just spoke earlier today, because it was, other than my son's being born, the most joyous day of my life was last Friday, when my grandson was born. But now, I have to always be careful. I got to always worry about him, because you see kids that are two years old being killed and kids that are 19 years old being killed. So we've got to think about these things. The Shaw family, Jamil Shaw, Jazz Shaw, had he walked home maybe at a pace a little bit faster, he'd be alive today. Or if he walked home at a pace a little bit slower, he might be alive today. I want to commend Councilman Parks for putting this resolution forward, because he has lived this himself, when he had his granddaughter murdered, senseless violence, murdered in the district that I now represent. So he's sensitive to this. Where it relates to silliness, which I did read about, every thing starts with a thought and then a word. What we're going to do here, what we've done today in the past 45 minutes, is we have discussed this. We have talked about it. Everything begins with a thought and then a word. That's how Dr. King made the great changes that he was able to help this country move to, with a thought and a word. So this is not silliness. This is frustration. This is a call for help. This is a symbol, a good symbol, because at the end of the day, we cannot just give up and say, oh, that's just another killing. The only way that we have a shot at making things happen is for us to constantly discuss these things. So with that, I was just so impressed with what every one of my colleagues said today. I just sat back, soaked it all in, and I say again to all of us, it is time that we, as leadership, have people focus on individuals' deeds and their actions, and not the color of their skin. And the last thing that I will say, without a doubt, Mr. Labange, without a doubt, Mr. Labange, this is a better country today than Labonge, this is a better country today than it was 40 years ago. When you have, when you have an African American and a woman running for the highest office in, on the planet, it would show that people's mindsets are changing. Now, we are not where we need to be, but I am proud to be an American, I am proud of this country that we live in, but we still have a lot of work to do. So with that said, let's take this, this resolution for what it is truly worth, which is a call for dialogue, a call for a discussion. And if we save one life, if we save one life, then it's worth moving forward with this. So again, thank you for always being there. And they don't get a dime. They, not that I'm aware of, they don't get a dime. So thank you. You know, Big Money Griff, now your nickname is Big Money Griff, you must have inherited some money or something. Anyway, thank you guys for coming down.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. I just want to add my thank you to all of you for being here today, and the importance of taking this action. We have five TV cameras who are here, who hopefully will play on the TV today and talk about all the things that have been said so eloquently by my colleagues about action as well as words, and what Martin Luther King made, how he made a difference in this community, and that our children are learning about the difference one man can make here in our country, and as Ms. Hahn and Ms. Perry, and one woman can make as well, and to you for all of your leadership. Thank you very much. And I have the pleasure of being able to go to Atlanta on Friday with a group of individuals here locally from the African American community and the Jewish community to celebrate his life there in Atlanta. And I will be there acknowledging what we did here in the City of Los Angeles, and what all of you did. So thank you all very much for that. And with that, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the amending motion. And close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations to all of you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Perry, Mr. Parks, and Ms. Hahn for the introduction of that motion. Next item. We'll have that item go forthwith, and we'd also like to have item 38 go forthwith as well. We do, I think if we could, we just have two speaker, a speaker card on items 30 and 31 out in the San Fernando Valley. Sharon Brewer, if she's still there in the San Fernando Valley, like to go on items 30 and 31. Ms. Brewer?
Yes. On item 30, special event fee waivers. Today, there's 12 total, 10 with amounts, $25,136, one no amount, one to reimburse. We have two after the fact. Regarding 30F in CD9 on May 4th, no amount given. The Vovo City of Los Angeles, or City of Angels fund ride, 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM, 1,400 community member bike rides, street closure. Motion looks like over 15 streets closed. Council action on March 30, 2007. It's the same event to be held on April 29 of '07, no dollar amount given. There is no way that today's waiver should not have a dollar amount when this is the second year of the event. So they must know how much it's going to cost. On 30L, it's CD13, March 22, $1,642 annual benefit art auction for lace. This is the Los Angeles Contemporary Exhibitions, 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Event coordinator is the same as the one that on February 1, City Council approved, a fee waiver of $4,213 for the February 14, 2008 Lust for Lace Valentine Day benefit. The city still has a major budget problem. Stop the fee waivers and let the people going to the event pay for it. Should I speak on 31 now, too?
Yes, please.
Okay. Basically, number 31 has to do with a request for an exemption from the Convention Center for the 12th Annual Parents Summit. The amount is $28,951. Nowhere in the motion does it say the age group that the parents are coming. But again, why are we waiving fees for LAUSD when they have their own budget? Again, stop the fee waivers for the Convention Center and special events. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brewer. Mr. Clerk, we have an amending motion on 30I.
There is a substitute motion that has been circulated on 30I.
Okay. Colleagues, we do have before us items 30 and 31. Seeing no other comments on that, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on items 30 and 31. And close the roll.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. I believe we're going to take item number 11 next.
And that was called special by Councilmember Weisar, and an amending motion has been circulated.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I just wanted to put in that amended motion and make sure we got in on time. Thank you.
Great, thank you. That item is now before us. Colleagues, item number 11. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item.
Item 7 was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Thank you. Before we go to item 7, Mr. Zine, item number 36 was asked to be held on the table for Mr. Parks by Mr. Labonge. Mr. Labonge, on item number 36 for Mr. Parks, did we want to hold that or continue that?
Could we continue it one day?
Continue it one day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Will it be continued until, continue until tomorrow? Like to acknowledge in our presence, one of our Community College Board members, Georgia Mercer, who is here with us. Georgia, thank you very much for joining us and all your hard work on the Community College Board. Thank you. We'd like to go next to item number 7. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Madam President. The reason we held this is because it may go into closed session. I discussed it with the city attorney, and he asked that we hold this till the end, and the event has to go to closed session. And some of the answers, this deals with the Tenny Pierce case and the law firm that took that case forward. A number of questions that have risen on that particular case, that was the two bite of dog food case, and we asked that the law firm come forward and answer some of the questions regarding the billing and regarding the circumstances, and that's why we're here on number 7. So if we can have the representatives come forward to the table.
And Mr. Zine, I apologize, there was one other item, and I know we're about ready to go there, but Mr. Rosendahl had called reconsidered item number 1. Now, we can either go ahead with this item, or...
Let's hold this and go to number 1.
Let's hold item number 1. Okay. Okay. So, my apologies, we're going to hold this one on the table, item number 7, and we'll go, Mr. Rosendahl, if you'd like to, and item number 1 from Friday's agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. Could we ask DOT staff to come on up for this one? This item has to do with cities' policy to give free parking at city meters to certain hybrid vehicles. We approved this on consent on Friday, but I have some questions I'd like to raise about it. All right, Ken, good afternoon, good morning. Would you tell us what this proposal is that we voted on last Friday?
What you did was you voted to pass an ordinance that would limit the free parking to only those vehicles that have clean air vehicle decals issued by the Department of Motor Vehicles.
And when were they issued?
These decals were issued last, I guess they issued the last of the 85,000 that were authorized in February of 2007.
So 85,000 cars have the sticker on it, correct?
Yes.
But those since August, did you say?
No, February of 2007.
Which is now a year and a month ago, we have not issued anymore.
No.
And how many more vehicles are there that have been purchased that would have fit that decal sticker?
I don't have those figures from the Motor Vehicle Department.
Yeah. Okay. But it's substantial, right? People are moving into the hybrids lickety-split. Okay. Now, why do we want to continue this freebie, since other hybrid people can't do this freebie? They've had a couple or three years of the incentive benefit. We're buying a lot of these vehicles as it is right now. Why should we continue that project when we have a budget deficit and we need a substantial amount of income to meet our deficit? Explain to me how it works and why the state continued it to 2011. We could let it go at 2009, right?
Right. I guess for the record, I'm Alan Willis with the Department of Transportation, since I'm going to be held accountable for what I say here. What we did was we prepared an ordinance specifically at the direction of the council. There were several options that were mentioned along the way. The pilot program could have been terminated. The program could have been allowed to expire January 1 of 2007, 2008, excuse me, or it could be extended to run coterminous with the sunset clause in the state law. Remember, the clean air vehicle decals give you the right to ride alone in the state's HOB lanes, so throughout the state. So even though they're not issuing anymore, they did say that they would continue to honor that benefit until such time as the lanes became too congested and they had to terminate it. So even though there was a firm termination clause, or date of January 1, 2011, it could always be terminated sooner. And I pointed out in one of the Transportation Committee meetings that, in fact, the city, the state has been cited as not achieving or meeting federal guidelines for speeds in its carpool lanes. So we already have a congestion problem in the carpool lanes, and it may very well be terminated sooner.
Okay, let me read this to you. "I don't think the city needs to continue giving subsidies to hybrid vehicle drivers. Hybrid vehicles certainly are a great environmentally friendly technology, and I'm proud to drive a hybrid to and from City Hall every day," which I do, "which is a Ford Escape hybrid. However, these vehicles are well-established in our marketplace. They prove to be very cost-effective for their owners without our cities subsidizing their parking. I would like to see us redefine the program to focus our incentives on vehicle technologies that are still in the development stages. These technologies, such as battery electric vehicles, still need government support to become commercially viable. Let's put our money and energy into areas where we can make a significant difference in making environmentally friendly technologies more commercially viable." By us approving this, how much revenue are we losing from city meters and parking facilities?
Well, our estimate today is that we're losing about $115,000, $116,000 a year. If this, with this ordinance, it will reduce the number of vehicles that actually get to park for free, because by our own surveys, about 60% of the vehicles that were parking for free have the decals. The other 40%, although they're hybrids, do not have the decals. So it would be about 60% of that 160,000, about $70,000, $80,000 a year, at current meter rates.
Colleagues, I know it's not a lot of money, but I also, but it is, it is $60,000, $70,000, $80,000. But also, we have been very effective with the hybrid model. People are buying them more than anything else. The waiting lists are still there. With the price of gas at $4 a gallon now, it's a no-brainer for everybody to go to a hybrid if they can get a hybrid. They were first used as incentives to get people to buy hybrids. Well, it incented people, and people very quickly moved toward that direction. But now, we even have a substantial amount of hybrids who can't get the sticker. I think we should let the program go by the wayside now, encourage people to continue to have hybrids. And I'd like to introduce a motion at another date that talks about the newest technologies, like electric cars and some of these others, that might we incent going forward. But I do not want us to go forward with the motion that we have. Thank you so much for speaking.
Thank you. And Mr. Labonge, just so you know, the ordinance that is before us was an adopted policy by the city that said just to the city attorney, "Come back with the ordinance." So the council took an action prior to that, asking them to draft this ordinance. Mr. Labonge.
Go, Alan. Okay, so you're parking on Hollywood Boulevard, you're in a hybrid, and you don't pay for the parking. That's correct?
Correct. If you have the clean air vehicle decal, once this ordinance becomes effective.
Got it. But what if you parked for more than an hour, because it's an hour meter zone between McCadden and Las Palmas? It's an hour meter zone.
You still have to abide by any time limits that are posted.
So how many, how long has this been in process?
The pilot program has actually been in effect for over three years now, I think three and a half years.
How many tickets have we given hybrid cars?
I don't know that figure. I don't think it's been that many.
Do you think we've given one?
We've given, we've given some, because we do enforce the time limits.
Right. But some, is some seven or 11?
I honestly don't know.
Or 22? The point I'm making, members, we do have restrictions on the hours in which you could park at a meter. You can't feed the meter whether you're a hybrid or whether you are, got a lot of quarters in your pocket, because they like to turn over the meter. That's the key on that situation. I share what your thoughts are, Bill, on that, but I do believe maybe, when does this, when does this appeal? When does this, 2011, why don't we do it just a year? Why don't we just do it a year? I think that would be fair to take an assessment, because there are times out where people will park their cars and then think it's for free, but then they get a ticket. And we give the people a ticket if they are...
Repealed what we did.
I understand that. But I would like to, Mr. Rosendahl, here's my friendly amendment. I don't know if we could do this, Mr. City Attorney. I can't do anything?
If, if you're making that substantive a change to the ordinance, it would have to go back for redrafting and then come back.
You mean instead of 2011 to 2009?
That's correct.
How about 2010?
That's still substantive.
All right, well, look, let's talk with the department, because you don't want to see people park in parking meter zones and stay longer than the hour that's there. You want the turnover. Is that correct? That's why you created parking meter zones?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll look at it. I kind of share what your thoughts are, Bill, because it's been there, but I discussed it a little in committee, but it was moving faster than a freight train. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you. How many other jurisdictions have this free parking with the hybrids?
The only one that I'm sure of in California was San Jose. They were the ones that actually started, I think, with this type of a pilot program.
Do they still have it?
I'm not aware whether they do or not. Theirs was actually one where, in order to qualify, you had to buy your hybrid in the city of San Jose. If you didn't, you didn't qualify for a sticker.
That helps with the sales tax in San Jose.
Yeah.
I support Mr. Rosendahl on this. It was an incentive to encourage people to purchase the hybrids before gas was the price it is today, which is now a necessity, why a lot of people are purchasing it. One of the issues I had is that at the 85,000 level, if you look at the number of the city vehicles, they have those stickers, which surprised the public of having those stickers on their cars. And we were going to go forward and try and have that amended to free up stickers for a lot of people, but if we're going to, which with the carpool lane, the ability to use the carpool lane, which are already over congested because of the population on that. So I think that the best approach would be to phase it out. But the concern is, some people are now into this mode where they park, they don't have to pay. You got to retrain all the DOT personnel, that the program no longer exists. Let it phase out over a period of time, and then move on to pay the fee like everyone else. So I can understand the concern, the confusion, but I know that we have an ordinance that says you can't have unhitched trailers, and those signs are posted. DOT personnel have to be trained about the enforcement of that. And every time we pass something, then there's that training and that retraining of all the personnel, the 500-plus DOT personnel that are out there doing enforcement. So I just want to be understanding, so they don't get in disputes with the motorists. If this takes effect, when it ends, the motorist gets a ticket, "I'm only there 20 minutes, it's an hour zone," and now we have more problems between the motorists, the traveling public, and the enforcement personnel from DOT. So whatever we come up with, and I support phasing it out, I think we need to phase it out so people understand, and the DOT enforcement personnel don't end up having a lot of hassles and confrontations with the public that thinks they can continue to do it indefinitely.
Well, and responding to the training issue, actually, if you were to phase it out, it actually is, is not that much of a retraining issue, because right now, it's granting an exception. All right? And the biggest problem in enforcement, as you probably well know, is the exceptions. The rule is that everybody pays. Okay? This is the one exception that we have besides disabled vehicles, and that's a state law.
And disabled, they can park indefinitely, correct?
And, and for free.
And for free. So if they want to be there eight hours in a one-hour zone, they can do that without paying?
Correct. That's state law.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, I just want to give a little history, and if there is a big change as well, I know the city attorney mentioned that comment, but there were several people who testified at our committee in support of this, as well as were ready to testify last Friday, before the council as well. This is something that has, was introduced and discussed in September of last year. We voted on directing the department to ask us to just... We voted on directing the department to ask us to just ask the ordinance to implement this extension to keep it consistent with the state law. So it is something that there have been numerous conversations with, and we all have a right to change our minds, Janet, but I do want it to be clear that this has been before us several times in this discussion. What we wanted to do was to make it consistent with the state. There are many laws that people have, it changes back and forth. We wanted it to be consistent with the state law. If the state decides it at some point as well and we decide, we can rescind that. But when you've told someone, we are going to make this, you know, available to you, it is, you know, every dollar counts, but what we are trying to encourage is people to either purchase, keep those hybrid vehicles, and we told them we were going to do this. Yes, we said it was going to end on a certain date, but so did the state as well. We are encouraging people that there is a benefit to hybrids. And I think that we have indicated to the public that this is what we wanted to do, that we wanted to support them, and to suddenly, in my perspective, pull the rug out from under them, I think is unfair in that respect of that we had. This was a policy that the city of Los Angeles took to encourage those environmental vehicles and to change midway, I think, would not be fair to those individuals who we have told were going to extend that for the small amount of money that it is going to be for the city of Los Angeles. So I would ask you to support the policy that we have adopted on numerous occasions. And we do have the opportunity to come back and revisit it and rescind that, but if there is going to be a different outcome today, I think it is only fair to let the environmental groups and the people who have those hybrids, who have testified on numerous occasions, to let them have the vote, an opportunity to speak here before we change something that I think this council has adopted previously.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Ellican.
Members, this item was on consent and I'm sensitive to what Mr. Rosendahl is saying. I don't know that, that it's the right kind of trade. Obviously, I've driven hybrid vehicles for the last numerous years. I even had one that had decals on it, but I'm not convinced that just by getting a decal, you should get free parking everywhere in the city of Los Angeles. I also believe that people may extend their parking privileges to the point where it impacts other people who would have normally received that parking, and they're driving around looking for parking, and that doesn't help. We should, we should make the hybrid vehicles drive around so at least they won't be wasting as much fuel. But seriously, I'm particularly concerned that the decals are limited and there are far more people who are conscientious, who have purchased the hybrid vehicles and who can't get decals. What is the incentive there? They can't get the decals, so they can't get, if you can't, if there's no more decals that the state is providing, what is the incentive to buy a hybrid since you can't get the decal and you can't get the benefit of the parking? So that doesn't make sense to me. I think the intent to encourage people to buy hybrid vehicles, I absolutely support, but if they can't get decals and they therefore can't get the parking benefit, we're only extending it to the few who did get the decals before? And I, I don't know if that's good public policy. And not to mention, I also think the time period is, is long and that we will have other things emerge that will be better to encourage people to purchase hybrids. So I would support reconsidering this matter and finding a better way to do this. Like I said, I completely support hybrid vehicles. I think they're the best technology that will be available in the next, next five to 10 years. If we get lucky and another form is, is created, that's great, but, but I don't see anything on the horizon that, in the short term. But I don't think that giving this benefit of the parking privilege is, on top of the privileges they've already obtained, is, is really doing any good. Because they've already got the decal, they're not going to turn it back, and so why, I mean, we're giving them a bonus? I don't get it. And I really think we should reconsider our action.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. And I do agree with you that the environmental community needs to be brought into this. So my suggestion, colleagues, would be to continue this back to committee, to take another deep breath and look at the ordinance. My hope would be we would phase it out by the end of '08 and explain to folks that it worked very effectively for a short period of time, and now we even have more vehicles than the 85,000. We're in a budget crunch here, you know, as a city, and I think the benefit that it has already given has been partly felt, and I'm looking forward to other motions going forward on electric vehicles and others that aren't even there yet that we would incent to go forward. This incentive program has been extremely effective. It's time to end it, but I would love to discuss it further in the committee and see if I'm wrong on this thing, but, but my hope would be to phase it out by the end of this year and let that money flow back into the treasury, especially when we make it a buck an hour rather than a quarter. And those who have hybrids get at least the value of a $4 gallon of gas goes a little longer than it does in the gas guzzlers that we have out there. That, that would be what I would like to do.
Is that a motion?
Mr. Labonde, I think he wants to move it back to committee. Do you want to...
Mr. Rosendahl, my suggestion is I think the committee chair, and as a member of the committee, it's you and I both on the committee, and I sometimes there, what Ms. Gruel said is there was a buildup to all this.
I understand.
And as the city attorney instructed me that 2008 or '09 or '10 and a half doesn't count. The thing I really want is to ask the department maybe to report back. I think you should go ahead of this. If we do want to repeal it, we could do it at any sometime in the future, but let it go ahead because all this work has been done. But ask Alan here, how many tickets have been issued for people who have, you know, used it and parked there all day, where you got a complaint on Langashim, or you got a complaint on Largemont, or some street where someone is, what's another word for feeding the meter? Because they're not feeding the meter.
Basically, it's feeding the meter, exceeding the time limit.
Yeah, exceeding the time limit. Get that data down and see how many we're doing. If this is, we make $82,000 a day on parking meters in the city of Los Angeles, is that correct? About, my math, number of meters times the number of streets?
Yes, yes.
So of that situation? So it's almost a day's, a little more than twice a day's pay on that bill, but the statistics, which now they have computers over at the DOT, they could figure out where the tickets are. Just like, I support more street cleaning in Los Angeles. We give a ticket for street cleaning. I don't know why we can't get it. It would pay for the street cleaning, but we don't use the ticket for the street cleaning to pay for that. Again, something we should look at as a budget-wise, it comes forward there. And also, lastly, Alan, find out if it's legal to ride bicycles on sidewalks, because I see that happening more, and let me know if there's a code on that. Thank you. Not on the agenda, but I had to ask him the question, Mr. City Attorney, just to make you smile.
Thank you, Mr. Labonde.
I think, I think, Bill, let's go back to it, because they've already done all this work in committee. I know you and I were there, you and I were running around. I think there's a point to what our committee chair said, and there's a point to what you said. That's my point.
I love you, Tommy. But, Madam Chair, as you know, I got a letter, as many of our colleagues did, that the city doesn't want to pay for humps, and we have to come up with it. I consider that a safety issue. I want to get those humps in my district. Every nickel, every dime counts at this point as we go into the budget process, but I don't want to blind, blindsight you or anybody else. So I'm more than happy to let it go forward, but I'd like us to consider electric, consider hydrogen cars and others as the new day of incenting people, incenting automobile manufacturers. If there was support for it, especially from you, Madam Chair, I would like to review this ordinance again, give the environmentalists a chance to weigh in, and if possible, phase it out. But if that doesn't make sense, then I don't need to fight the council over this issue. Thank you.
Again, I think Mr. Rosendahl acknowledged, we are trying to save every, every penny on that, but do believe that there has been some work with the community on this item. So does anyone want to second Mr. Rosendahl's motion to send it back to committee at this time? Second, okay. So we'll vote on returning it. I'm, I'm fine if we want to send it back to committee as the committee chair, so unless there's opposition to, we will send it back. But I do encourage all council members to know that we would like to see from, hear from all sides on that item. So we'll, we'll see you again. Thank you, Alan. Send it back to committee. Next item is going back, Mr. Zine to item number seven. Yes, Mr. Cardenas.
Point of clarification, please. For the record, earlier, I spoke on an item and I referred to the Los Angeles Times a couple of times, and the word silliness was used in their article today, and I just wanted to clarify for the record. It appears that I did not clarify that the word silliness was in a quote of someone that they interviewed. I didn't want people to think the Los Angeles Times said that this resolution was a bit of silliness. No, it was a quote in the article in the LA Times, so I just wanted to clarify for the record, it was not the LA Times who called the resolution silly. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And just before, Mr. Zine, we did have an amending motion on 11B that was submitted after our vote, so we'll reconsider item 11. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. And we'll now vote with the amending motion, item 11B. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Zine.
You sure? Madam President, you sure?
I am sure, sorry. Thank you for your patience.
Well, I got a lot of patience. Okay, if we can have the folks come forward on this particular matter, number 11, to the center table. And identify yourself, please, and then we have a number of questions. The city attorney will tell me when we need to go into closed session, when we get to that particular arena, which this may lead to that.
If we need to go into closed session.
Pardon me?
If we need to go into closed session.
If we do? Okay, well, we'll see.
Council people, I'm Ann Haley, City Attorney's Office, manager of the outside counsel oversight division, and I'd like to introduce to you Brian Sun of Jones Day, who was our head litigator on the Tenny Pierce trial and litigation.
Your name, sir?
Brian Sun, last name Sun, S-U-N.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sun. Ms. Haley, thank you. I was the one who initially said no on the Tenny Pierce settlement, and then Mr. Smith and I did a motion requesting outside counsel, and the series of questions we have deals with the outside counsel, the activities of the outside counsel on the Tenny Pierce matter, which went to, to describe to people who may not be familiar with that, was the LA City firefighter, Tenny Pierce, who in a prank had two bites of dog food at the fire station, and a lawsuit was brought forward, was brought forward to this council for a settlement, $2.8 million. The council supported it. I was the lone no vote. Ultimately, went to the mayor, the mayor vetoed it, and then went to outside counsel. So that's where we are now. The outside counsel was asked for by me, Mr. Smith, in a motion, and you were selected, I guess, by the city attorney. Ms. Haley, is there a process whereby the city attorney gets the outside counsel? Because we never recommend any law firm, just that we believe that it needs to go to outside counsel since the recommendation came from the city attorney's office, and we felt to be more comfortable taking this to an outside counsel.
Absolutely. Though you did actually approve the firm at length, because the process is this, we, when we determine within our office that there's a need for outside counsel, or as in this case, if we are instructed by you to hire outside counsel, we conduct, if time permits, a request, a competitive bid, a request for proposals, which we did, in this case, on an expedited basis since the trial date had already been set. Ten law firms responded to that RFP, and we interviewed all ten of them. And by, you know, through a, you know, measures of analysis of the firms qualifications and the costs, the hourly rates proposed, Jones Day by far was, seemed to be the best qualified law firm to handle this litigation. I must tell you, we pay only reduced rates to our law firms, so I have to tell you, in this case, not all the firms were even really that excited about taking on this matter, which clearly had some challenges for the city. Even law firms prefer the ones that look like big winners, and so this was not an easy sell necessarily, and all factors considered, Jones Day seemed far and above the law firm best qualified to handle this matter for us.
And on all outside counsel cases, is there an RFP goes out for competitive bid?
It's not necessary, but yes is, is the quick answer, though by charter, it's not necessary if the time, the interests of the city do not allow for, because it usually takes quite a bit of time to draft and release the RFP, give at least two to four weeks for a response. So in recent memory, we've always done an RFP, though it is not required.
So it doesn't, all of a sudden, this firm comes up or that firm comes up, there's an actual process whereby which you selected? I was unaware of that. So I know when we talk about outside firms, oftentimes outside firms come here and discussing that you, I don't know if any of my colleagues were aware, how those outside firms are selected.
Absolutely. Any, in all, in recent years, always, there's been a request for proposal, and then we must come to this body for approval of funding. So the, a law firm is always approved by the council. We go to budget and finance first and then council to get approval for funding for the contract.
And then for the contract, the approval for this contract, what was the hourly rate and what was approved in council for the funding? Because I remember that we approved a certain amount of money when we approved the outside firm. I think it was 750, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes, and then we sometimes come back for additional funding when, when it's necessary to add money to the contract. And I guess hourly rate...
I don't remember if it ever came back, though.
It did.
Came back for additional funding?
Yes.
You know when that was? Because I don't really remember that. I remember the 750. I don't remember ever coming back to ask for additional funding on it.
It did, and probably, because the total amount appropriated thus far, and we're finished now, but it's 1.4 million, so we certainly came back. And I believe it was just the one time, so in two...
But we originally appropriated 750.
Yes, and then we came back for additional funding, once that amount had been depleted.
Okay, that was the question. Mr. Smith, do you recall that, coming back for additional funding? I don't remember. That's why I'd like some information on that, because I, I don't remember.
And we can...
I'd like to have that information, because I don't remember, because I was monitoring this place very closely, obviously.
And that would be in the council file index, but I can get you...
Okay. So what was the hourly rate?
$400 per hour.
Okay. So $400 an hour for the case? And the total number of billable hours charged?
Let's see. Now, I don't have the actual hours, though I have what we have paid of the four point, I mean, I'm sorry, of the 1.4 million. Let's see. Mr. Sun, may I? I don't know if we have the actual hours. I mean, we could...
Then how, well, when that, when the bill's submitted, is there a review to say, you know, you're, you're charging 750. What did you do for the 750? What'd you do for the 1.4?
Yes.
Were there conferences? Were there papers filed? Were there depositions? Is that all processed by the city attorney's office?
Yes. In fact, I'm actually excited to tell you about all we do, because we're proud of the outside counsel division and what we do. The invoices come in to our office. We have an accounting unit within the outside counsel oversight division, and the accountant types in that division look at the contract, compare what the invoice charges against the contract. So for instance, if there are billers on the invoice that are not listed as approved billers in the contract, those are adjusted out. If, if copies are billed at 25 cents a page when the contract says we only allow 10 cents per page, all those adjustments are made directly to the invoice.
So there's an audit within the city attorney's office?
Absolutely. First, a financial kind of objective one, then a more subjective review actually by lawyers in the outside counsel oversight division who look for reasonableness and, you know, should it have taken 10 hours to do this deposition, for instance? That type of review is done. And we actually make adjustments to the invoices as we see.
Now, on this particular firm, it was 1.4 million. What did they bill versus what was paid? Did they receive everything that they billed for? Was there any adjustment?
No, no, no. Actually, our office adjusted about a quarter of a million dollars, about, a little over, a little under $250,000 out of it. a little under $250,000 out of it. And then the firm actually made some voluntary adjustments as well.
So actually, the bill was one and a half million, and it was cut down from one and a half million?
About that. That would be about right.
Okay. The, what other expenses were charged to the city, other than the 1.4? What did we get for the 1.4 million exactly? What did they do? The case didn't go to trial, and the question is, what brought up to light also, after this, there was another case that went to trial, and it reported in the paper, the bill was like $300,000 for outside counsel. And the question was, in this particular situation, where it didn't go to trial, what actually was done for the 1.4 million dollars?
Now, I'll let Mr. Sun speak to that, but I will say, as any, as our lawyers know, the pre-trial period is really where much of the money is spent. You know, the discovery and getting the trial, the case worked up for trial. And again, we had a short time period here, because the trial date was already, had been set, so there was a lot to be done to get up to speed. And that's, the costs really come in trial prep. But again, I'll ask Mr. Sun. And this is not unique. We do have other instances of other outside counsel matters where, prior to trial, though I know the case you're referring to, not in that case, but in others, where there's been in excess of a million dollars spent, just in trial prep.
Well, the case I'm referring to, Mr. Pierce testified as being a prankster, which was reported in the paper. That was the case with the two captains, where they received a large settlement?
Yes.
And I've got the...
Well, no, jury verdict.
The jury verdict, where Mr. Pierce testified that he was a prankster in that particular case of those two captains, which they received a significant amount of money.
Yes.
I don't know if you recall that. Anyway, it was reported in the paper that he testified at their trial that he was a prankster.
But you're getting to the self-defense.
Well, no, I'm trying to focus this, is to say, that was my contention all along, coming from law enforcement, where I spent nearly 40 years.
Yeah.
Pranks played in law enforcement, pranks played in the fire department. That's why I said no. This wasn't about race. This, to me, was a prank amongst colleagues that worked together. And that was the issue that I went on to why I said no. If there was any racial discrimination or any overtone of that, then I wouldn't have been so obstinate in my resistance to this settlement initially. So when I read in the paper that he testified, yeah, he was a prankster, and the two captains received multimillion dollar settlements, it brought to my focus what was done with this firm in this particular case, where it did not go to trial. And there's also, when you talk about the trial was set, I understand also there's a process of continuation, if we want to continue the trial, to a later date for more review, more investigation, more depositions.
And as it turned out, the trial date was moved. But actually, the verdicts you speak of in those other cases is, I mean, we don't need to get into the substance of it, but it's very much why we thought maybe this case would be better settled. We are having terrible misfortunes with juries these days, you know, so jury verdicts are hurting us, you know?
And it's like rolling the dice.
Absolutely.
And so what, and Mr. Sun, if you want to answer, actually, the process, what you folks actually did for the 1.4 million dollars?
Certainly. I think it would be helpful in responding to your query, sir, to indicate the context that we found the case in, or the posture that we found the case in when hired by the city. First of all, our mandate from the city, this body, was to do two things. Review the case and assess it, because there had been some prior history about the evaluation of the case, and advise this body of what we thought about the litigation. Secondarily, what's in the so-called contract that we had with the city, was to prepare this matter for trial if it needed to go to trial. And so we undertook both those tasks in this way. On the litigation side, that is to say, to get ready for the case, we found that some depositions had been taken, but basically, we had anywhere from, initially, it was a March trial date, we got the case in late January, early February. The matter was continued to September for trial, so we had basically about six or seven months to get ready. The case was at an early stage, even though we're so close to trial, because the plaintiff had elected to seek to file an amended complaint, where they were trying to get in some stuff about radio shows and publicity surrounding the case.
There was a lot of publicity on this case.
There was a lot of publicity about this case, that I think everyone in this room knows, made the case even all the more challenging for the city. So we were at the early stages of a case that we needed to crash, basically, to get it ready. We were challenging the pleadings, filing what we call demurs, trying to get the case thrown out at the pleading stage. We were filing what we call anti-slap motions, trying to at least eliminate part of the plaintiff's case, where we thought they were trying to sensationalize certain aspects of the case to prejudice the jury. I can say all this in public, because all this stuff is a matter of public record. We also were litigating discovery motions and different issues that would have affected the ultimate trial, we thought, in terms of what evidence would be introduced. You might recall, and members of this body might recall, that the city comptroller of the city, Ms. Chek, had done some audits or some studies of the LA Fire Department. Some of those studies were, shall we say, less than flattering, about the culture and the command structure, and how things were handled within the department with respect to disciplinary functions and attitudes on race, et cetera. So we had many challenges in trying to limit the scope of what would actually be introduced to trial, because the plaintiff's complaint was fraught with all kinds of excerpts from these reports, and that they were going to try to get in at trial. On top of that, everyone seems to know publicly, I distinguish what's public and what's really known to those who knew the case, that this was a case not just about alleged racial harassment. There were allegations about retaliation made by Mr. Pierce. That is to say, that when he alleged that he was racially harassed when fed dog food by some of his fellow firefighters, he also made claims that, once he brought this to the attention of the fire department command and disciplinary structure, that there was retaliation in the form of shunning and all sorts of other sorts of things that I think you're familiar with. So it's that second set of claims that we're also focusing on, that also required us to expand our fact investigation, for which a lot of our resources were devoted. By fact investigation, I know from your background as a former law enforcement officer, you know that we drill down on the facts, meaning we drill down on witnesses, we drill down on theories, we drill, and in this case, there was allegations that Mr. Pierce himself was known as a quote-unquote prankster himself. Much ballyhooed in the press. That was a subject area that had not been probed into with great detail, other than what had been made as a matter of public record in the media. We had to investigate that to see if that could help us in our defense of the claims. I'd be happy to tell the body in closed session sort of what our findings were in that regard, and how that affected our preparation for trial. But essentially, those were the kinds of issues we needed to deal with. But one I need to highlight for you was that we focused a lot on the retaliatory claims, the retaliation claims, because while the public, I think, became enamored with this concept of, why would we pay a plaintiff so much money for a couple of bites of dog food? In fact, I don't think that's what this case was about. And again, I've spoke to members of the council about this in public and in private, when the settlement issues came up. I think this body knows where we were coming from. We were prepared to go to trial then. We said we were prepared to go to trial. We gave our candid assessments of the case, some of which found their way into the LA Times.
Everything seems to find its way into the media.
That's the way of the world, I understand that.
Even from closed session? That's why we're in open session.
I think some of what I said in closed session found its way into the LA Times. But the fact of the matter is, sir, we did a lot of work in this case, and there were issues swirling around this department, as you know, that go beyond just that case, that were a factor in the trial. My colleague here just mentioned something about the other cases that were going on at that time, in the summer of 2007. The city took a hit in several matters, the Bressler case, the Lee Mc case, the Lee case, all of which were seven-figure verdicts, all of which had a certain commonality to them. And this is public record, so I can speak about them. The juries were hitting this city hard for emotional distress claims made by these plaintiffs for how the department treated them after they came forward with complaints, and what they were forced to allegedly endure as a result of their being sort of outed as someone breaking from this so-called norm, or code, whatever you want to call it. So we had some challenges here. Didn't mean that we didn't think we could win the case or make it triable, and I reported that to the council. I know you were unable to appear for the vote on the settlement, and I'm happy to, as I would with any member of this body, talk with you both privately or in a closed session about the case. And, you know, we endeavored in this case to budget and give estimates to city attorney. This was a hard case. We did what we think we were asked to do. And I believe, as was just mentioned in the record, my firm wrote off a lot more time internally before you even got the bills. This was not something that we did because of, we saw it as a billing opportunity. I can tell you, we did this because we felt this was part of our trying to commit to public service. And I'd be happy to talk to you about more of that privately, if you'd like as well.
Mr. Weiss has asked me to ask you what your hourly, normal hourly rate is.
Mr. Weiss...
I don't want to know.
Mr. Weiss knows that it was...
We were at 400. Can I see 500? Can I see 600?
Well, I don't know if I should do this in closed session, but I'll say it, because it's been in the paper in other cases. At the time, I was at 750 an hour, and I'm higher now.
I think I'm going back into the private sector. No, I wouldn't.
Okay.
So, Mr. Zine, you were over a bit, because of the, I pushed the wrong button earlier, so you've probably spoken about six minutes. So there are no other speakers on the queue?
There are.
Do you want to continue? There are no other speakers on the queue?
Well, then, let me continue to go. Or we can go to a closed session. I still have some other questions regarding, I'll push my button. The racial, was there any evidence that you found in depositions, and how many depositions were taken about anything racial involving Mr. Pierce?
Well, I think most of the depositions crossed into that realm. You couldn't avoid that issue in this case, no matter what the claims were. We, Jones Day, were involved in more than 25 depositions, and countless other interviews of firefighters who were not deposed. And I would like to, I think it's better for me to go in the closed session to talk about our mental impression and work product and privileged issues, if, to make that request, because those are matters, I think, that cross into that realm.
So there were at least 25 depositions or interviews with firefighters?
No, there were more than, more interviews than 25. There were 25 formal, more than 25 formal depositions.
With firefighters?
With firefighters, or experts, or people of that ilk, related to possible testimony at trial. There were countless others that were interviewed by us to investigate certain aspects of the case, whether they are involving Mr. Pierce's alleged history of pranking himself, or issues regarding the alleged allegations of retaliation, shunning, things of that nature, that he claimed took place in this case.
And is the case fully closed and settled and resolved? Is all billing completed? Have all payments been made?
I believe there's some outstanding invoices with the city that still need to be resolved, but we, a lot of it has been paid, I think.
Yes, because of our rigorous review, not only, but we have sufficient funding to pay.
I didn't know that you had that internal process.
I'm glad to be able to tell you.
Maybe you should inform us about that more often, so Gary doesn't have to come by and defend the actions, when we ask, why was this done? Why was that done?
Yes.
The concern I had on it, and coming from a law enforcement background, you look at the evidence, you look at the witnesses, you look at the information, what really troubled me on this is, and I looked at this for a long time, I could not find anything racially motivated with the activities by his colleagues. And I know, I am Middle Eastern, and my time in the law enforcement, the LAPD, if I could file a suit, I probably would be able to make some money because of discriminatory comments made, because I'm Middle Eastern. It doesn't happen now, but it did when I was a police officer. And some of that, may say, is just camaraderie, just joking, whatever the case may be. When it came to the racial issue, that's where I had a real issue and a real concern, that nothing ever surfaced to my mind regarding anything racial. Just, but they talk about people playing games, people doing things that are not professional, but when you're living together, when you're working together, and you got a lot of free times, you know, fire department does have a lot of free time between calls, sometimes things happen. And it was really offensive to me. And other firefighters have approached me and said, thank you for standing up and voting no on this. I mean, that was from African-American, Latino, and white firefighters. So that was the core that I was really struggling with, that I could never really find the logical connection between that settlement, urgently, the settlement that was ultimately obtained, and what the evidence was, all along the process. If you can just respond to that, from what you did, because I didn't do any depositions, I didn't do any of that investigation.
We have another speaker after you, Mr. Zine, now.
We do have no speaker? Well, that's good. I'll keep dragging on until we get a couple more speakers. Go ahead.
Would you like me to respond?
Yes, please, Mr. Sun.
I think, as you know, sir, that there were a lot of moving parts and dynamics to this case. As I said a moment ago, I don't think this case was just about the racial harassment allegations, that I think so captured the eye of the public and the media in this case. It is one of the things that I think is misunderstood about this case. And then we have to deal with the realities of the courtroom, we as litigators and trial lawyers, versus what the popular view or the public perception might be of a particular piece of litigation. And the realities of this case were, as I reported to council both publicly and privately, there were some issues that needed to be dealt with, that did not make this sort of a slam dunk defense verdict case, or one for the plaintiff. And again, I hesitate to talk publicly about some of our mental impressions and work product, but again, those who were in attendance in those hearings on the eve of trial, I might add, understood the dilemma that this body faced. And the verdicts that have been rendered, including the Tohill-Burton case recently, I think reflect and illustrate the problems that this body and the LA Fire Department have with this type of litigation. These are not easy cases to defend. Now, it's easy for me as a lawyer, whether I'm getting paid at my regular rates or at a lower rate, to say, I'm happy to try these cases. I would have loved to have tried this case personally. It was, would have been a challenge, and I, I've, will express my views, as I did in closed session, about what our chances were of winning and not winning and all that, and I'm happy to repeat those to you, if we go to closed session. But the fact of the matter is, the public misunderstood this case, and there was a lot of things stirred up because of dynamics that went beyond the actual litigation itself, that I won't get into, that I think you're aware of, that were swirling around this case, that made it even more difficult to defend. And we had some very serious issues about how we were going to select a jury in this case. And so we had a lot of challenges here, and I, I think that one thing is certain, I believe we notified and gave some sense to the city attorney, and hopefully through them to this body, that even at our reduced rates, this was going to cost the city a bunch of money to defend. Now, when you defend cases, as insurance companies or big corporations often have to do, sometimes you have to draw a line between principle and economics. And then you have what's right. And, you know, we're not Mercedes-Benz. You don't try your cases because you think you make a good product, even if it means it's going to cost you more in legal defense than it is to pay the money out to the plaintiff who's trying to shake you down for some money.
I like that term, shakedown.
Well, it's what it is in litigation, you know, but I represent plaintiff sometimes, so sometimes I take a different tack, but it depends on each case. This city was faced with a series of cases, a series of litigations, that were, nothing good could come as a result of it. And again, in closed session, I think I could talk to you about some of these non-economic variables, some of these issues that came into play, that I think influenced the number of members of this body to vote for a settlement. Doesn't mean that you couldn't make an argument, that you shouldn't stand on principle and try these cases, even if it's going to cost you more money to defend them, and even pay out settlements and do appeals, just because you believe you need to stand by principle. Because there were a lot of other issues here, such as the retaliation claims. And more importantly, I think you had an issue that I spoke about in closed session, which is, what was best for the city and what was best for the LA Fire Department, that I, again, I would rather discuss in closed session rather than in open session.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you. I was feeling lonely over here. Do you charge the city the same rate as you charge other clients? Or do you charge us more? Do you charge us less?
Well, I think, I don't know how much of it's a matter of public record, but I'll tell you something. My firm was at...
Your rate, your rate, the rate that you charge. I'm not saying the final bill. But when you do the work for the city of Los Angeles, are you doing it based on the rate that your firm charges? Or do you charge us more because we're government, you charge us less? What?
The city of LA was not a client until this case, I believe. I think we were adverse to the city, and the contract reflects we had to give some conflict waivers from other clients in order to take on this representation. As was just mentioned earlier, this was not the most popular case to take on, for reasons that I can, again, describe in closed session. My firm made a decision to respond to the RFP. I remember it well, because I was getting ready to start a trial when I was asked to come to speak with the city attorney about taking on this case. And I will say to you that we do adjust rates from time to time for governmental or quasi-governmental bodies, to try to answer your question. The city I did not, we did not have a track record for, I don't believe, for this case. And quite frankly, it was, I believe, a negotiated rate. It went down about as low as I thought I could sell internally to my firm.
Okay, so that, that's, that's the answer I was looking for. Did we negotiate the rate? Was it just hiring the firm, and the firm just puts out a number and just charges whatever? The reason why I ask you that is because the public tends to believe, in the court of public opinion, which is outside the real court, that, you know, firms like yours are just as highfalutin firms, and all you do is just fleece the government. just as highfalutin firms and all you do is just fleece the government. So I'm not saying you do, but that's the answer I was looking for. So it was negotiated? It wasn't negotiated, the rate wasn't negotiated up, the rate was negotiated down?
I think, if I can put it this way, the city attorney basically said, "It ain't going to get any higher." And I had to go back and talk to my partners, some of who probably were less than enamored about us taking this case because of that economics, but who believed in what we were doing. And we reached an agreement.
And council members, I'm sorry, if I may, just to allay any concerns there, we have perhaps not the best reputation in the city. We always pay a reduced rate. We do not pay the going market rate. In fact, we now have in our contracts a clause that says you will, that you will not have a client to whom you charge a lesser rate than you charge the city. So just, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. And that was administered in this case? That negotiation?
Yes, oh, we, yes.
All right. Is your recommendation a science?
My recommendation, sir?
Yeah, when you recommend to your client, is it a science?
On, on whether to settle or go to trial?
Exactly.
Oh, that's a good question.
Now, you're talking to somebody who's an engineer. Strictly speaking, it's not a science. But my next question is, so it's not a science. My next question is, is your job to make recommendations to your client based on the facts that you accumulate? Or is it your job to tell your client what to do based on your facts?
Depends on the context and depends on what the client asks of me. I mentioned a moment ago about the moving dynamics and variables that were present in this case, external factors that I thought were influencing maybe members of this council at the time this came up for review close to trial. I tried to assess and factor those in. At the end of the day, my basic assignment was still to give you my review of the case, where I thought we stood, what our chances of winning and losing were, and what the range of that was. Some of that was reported, again, in the LA Times about some of the work we had done in that regard, much to my chagrin, because it affected, I think, the plaintiffs somewhat too. But in this case, I think this body was looking to me, or my firm, for some guidance on whether we should go to trial and what the upsides and downsides. I know that the city attorney's office was very much pressing us for some, some more commitment as to what we think would happen. And, you know, in my world, it sounds like a cop-out, but sometimes you don't know until the judge rules on your evidentiary motions and whether or not you're going to get in the chick report or not, or get it excluded, you know. For me to give a percentage chance of whether I'm going to win or lose will often depend on the motions and liminy that I won't know until the day of trial. That's the dilemma and quandary. So although it sounds like I'm doing all this qualifying, I'm, it's hard for me to be clairvoyant when I don't know what the judge is thinking about whether or not my case is going to get gutted or, or the plaintiff's case is going to be strengthened because a bunch of prejudicial, potentially prejudicial or inflammatory evidence gets in. So, but I, but to answer your question, because I think I'm not getting into it, is, in this case, I think you were looking to us to give our fair assessment of what would happen at trial, and I think we gave that to you.
Well, actually, your answer was excellent. To some people who weren't following your words and your thought process, they might think that you weren't answering the question, but you were. Because the way in which you answered the question has a lot to do with the complications of representing a client in a case. A client always wants to know, "Am I going to win or lose?" But the bottom line is, you don't know that. That's up to a judge to set the stage in court, and it's up to, in this case, a jury to decide whether or not who's going to win or lose, or how much they're going to lose. Or winning and losing might mean we get out of there with $500,000 settlement or judgment, or we get out of there with a $10 million judgment and we lost. My point is, I want to thank you for, for expressing to the people watching this how complicated your job is and how it's not black and white. So my last question is this, when you're in the court trying your case for your client, is that environment different than the, the court of public opinion outside the court?
All the time.
Can you give, can you give us an example? It seems that sometimes it might be frustrating to represent your client when maybe this clamoring outside the court is one thing, yet you're trying to focus on representing your client and doing the best job you can for them.
That's right. And, and you know, the challenge in a case like this, sir, as you know, this was highly publicized, okay? Which presented another challenge for us in jury selection. But when you're in a courtroom, presumably you get 12 jurors who hopefully have not made up their mind, who are not influenced by media and the like. So I, I've had a few cases that have been in the limelight before, where I've had to deal with the challenges of trying to select a fair and impartial jury. And then when you do that, that's the best thing you can hope for, either as a plaintiff or a defendant, because then you get your fair shake. Then our system works, hopefully, whether you win or lose. We were trying to strive for that in this case, made all the more difficult because of the media and the series of trials that led up before the Pierce case. And, but when I get in that courtroom with 12 jurors who give me a fair shake from the get-go, that's the best I can hope for. And that's what we were hoping for in this case, that would give the city a fighting chance in a case like this.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Alcoon followed by Mr. Labange.
Council members, I wasn't here when, when this council made a decision to hire outside counsel or directed the city attorney to hire outside counsel. But I do want to let you know that I've, I've been for years on record as questioning the use of outside counsel. When I was the vice chair of the state senate joint legislative audit committee, I called for an audit of the MTA's use of outside counsel. I called for a similar audit of the city attorney's outside counsel, and we negotiated with Laura Chick to do an audit, which then went sideways. But the bottom line is this, I think the use of outside counsel should be used for very specific situations, when particular expertise is needed, or for other exigent circumstances. In reflection, it's easy for me to say, "I think," that I don't think we needed outside counsel here. And that's no disparaging comment towards you. You're obviously very, very, more than competent. You're, you're a superstar from what I hear. So that's not the issue. The question is, did we need a superstar to negotiate this settlement that we knew was going to cost some money? I mean, come on, the facts of the case were, were pretty obviously going to lead us to the direction of having to settle at some point. So I think that when we, first of all, I think we need to keep tighter reins on the city attorney's use of outside counsel. I would rather we beef up our city attorney staff, give them the training that they need to become better at what they do, and even create segments in our office that are even more expertise, have, have greater specific expertise than they currently have, so that we can, we can address some problems as they emerge. I don't think that the expertise needed in this particular case rises to the level of, of outside counsel. So if I have that problem with the city attorney's use of outside counsel, I really think the city council needs to have even tighter reins on when we're directing the city attorney to use outside counsel. In this case, the city attorney told us it was going to cost more than a million bucks. And I think we, we got what we paid for, and we, while the end result might have been higher than we wanted politically, I think it was about what we would have got if we used a city attorney to negotiate this settlement. So all that is said, and I, I almost want to apologize, because it's easier to say in hindsight, but I wanted to say it for the record, because the problem to me is whether or not we have created a system that, that keeps close tabs and, and reigns on the use of outside counsel, whether it's city council-directed or whether it's city attorney-directed. I believe we could do a better job, and I believe that this budget cycle cries out for us to do it now.
Thank you. And I know Mr. Parks feels the same way. Every day, Haley, when we're in budget committee, I think he asks you when you come to council and budget committee. Mr. Labange.
I'll call the question.
Thank you. Mr. Labange calls the question. Just you. Mr. Labange has called the question. Madam Clerk, open the roll.
To answer the other questions I have.
But there were...
Well, there was an option, either go in closed session or do it in open session. And if we're going to close this because of Mr. Labange's motion, I still have some unresolved questions regarding this.
Actually, the question was called, and so the council should, or has to vote on whether to end the debate. And if the debate is ended, our council, our attorneys would be happy to meet with you in private to answer any questions.
I want to be here in this council chamber. Whether it's open or closed, I want to get this resolved today and not drag it on.
Then the next thing the council needs to do is vote on whether to call the question.
Okay, but then we can still...
No, that, that...
No, I understand, not in open session, closed session, and if I need to get the answers, because I'm still not satisfied, I still have some unresolved questions.
When you call the question, it doesn't matter whether it's an open or closed.
No, I understand that, but I was the one that made the motion on this to resolve this matter. So I, I have a couple more questions. That's what I have.
Two more questions?
Yes.
I'm going to retract my call for two more questions, two more only questions.
Okay, number one, number one question.
Well, no, Mr. Labange can remove his, his motion, yes.
Number one question. My staff gave me the history on this particular case, and it shows on December 11th, '07, the First Amendment adding $650,000 for a new total of 1.4, approved by the city attorney. It doesn't show that it came to council for a vote.
It had to.
Says it was approved by the city attorney. And the next question I have, Mr. Sun, I want to thank you for your candidness here on this particular matter, and hopefully, we've all learned from this Mr. Pierce lesson. Those are my two questions. End statement. Thank you.
I'd like to answer the first question. I think the second was a statement. On the approval, when we approve the additional funds?
Yes, so it would have come... Okay, well, I will...
Anyway, we'll deal with that later.
Yes.
Mr. Geis, he can deal with that.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'll call the question.
Thank you, Mr. Zine.
There's $1,231 in my calculation.
I'm going to try to negotiate that he won't bill us, the outside counsel won't bill us for this.
Thank you, councilor, for being here. I'll call the question.
For the record, I will not be billing the city.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. This is a status report. It's a receive and file. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Any other, next items, Mr. Clerk?
Madam President, there is a special one, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Madam President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the city council has determined that the Friday, April 4th, city council meeting should be canceled, so the council members could attend the funeral of fallen firefighter Brent Lovren. Immediate action is required to post a cancellation notice and notify interested members of the public as soon as possible, that there will not be a meeting this Friday. Council must first make findings pursuant to government code section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Thank you. That item is now before us on the findings. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the findings, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Now, the item is before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
12 ayes.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl, you had a special introduction?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'm delighted to, to introduce, joining me is Dr. Walter Rutherford, who's a dear friend of mine. We went to high school and to college together, if you can believe it, I was once a young kid, and his lovely wife Bonnie, who's a minister, and they're up from San Diego to have lunch with me and see me in the world that I'm in. So he knows me better than anybody else around the horse show, and I'd like to welcome Dr. Walter Rutherford and his wife Bonnie. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Ms. Rosendahl. Mr. Clerk.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those we posted and referred.
Desk is clear.
Thank you. Do we have any announcements today, colleagues? If not, I do have an adjourning motion. Anyone else have adjourning motions? Ask everyone to please rise. We are doing adjourning motions. If we could ask colleagues to stay for us to have a quorum. Mr. Labange.
Thank you. I, members, I ask for adjourning memory of Scott Allman, 54 years old, grew up in the Las Felas district. He's survived by his mother Nora Allman and his sister Debbie Huesman.
Thank you. I'd like to, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Ms. Gruehl. I would like us to adjourn today in the memory of Annette Fiamengo, who passed away last Thursday. She was only 27 years old, and her friends and family feel like she died way too soon. Her six-year-old daughter Marina Nicole Aranda and eight-year-old Leanne Ambrose, who Annette was a guardian of, will certainly miss not having Annette as a mother to guide them through their life. She was a top student at, in the professional nursing program at Harbor College. She enjoyed music, reading, the outdoors, and spending time with the children and her friends. She's also survived by her parents Ivanka and Malay Fiamengo, grandparents Ivan and Teresa Spenial, and her brothers Paulo and Ivisa Fiamengo, her fiance, Robert Flores, and many relatives. She was a cousin to the husband of one of my staff members, Anna Bosick, in my San Pedro office. The funeral was held on Saturday, but certainly she will be very, very missed.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Yes, Ms. Perry.
I wanted to announce that Joanne Gaudioso, she was with the CLA's office for many years. Her mother, Lucille Gaudioso, passed away last week. Her rosary will be held Thursday, April 3rd, at 7:00 PM at Angelino Mortuary at 5998 Van Nuys Boulevard. The funeral mass will be held Friday, April 4th, 11:00 AM at St. Patrick's Roman Catholic Church at 6160 Cartwright Avenue in North Hollywood. Internment will follow at Holy Cross Cemetery in Culver City. Donations in lieu of flowers may be made in memory of Lucille C. Gaudioso to the charity of your choice.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Also, just to add, firefighter Brent Lovren, as you mentioned, were adjourned on Friday, but the public is invited to attend the service at the Cathedral of Our Lady of Angels at 500 West Temple Street on 9:30 on Friday morning. Just a reminder, the public is invited to attend.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. It's a way to give tribute to that wonderful firefighter. I'd like, if you could, adjourn in memory of Harold C. Lamb, passed away on March 25th, 2008, at the age of 86. He was born May 13th, 1921, in San Francisco and was a resident of California for his entire life of 86 years. Harold was the father of Ron Lamb, some of you may remember, was a former senior deputy to Mayor Tom Bradley.